Good evening, we'll call this meeting to order and I'll invite you to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to your equality and privilege and justice, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you for being here tonight, we're missing tonight our Director of Finance, Tim Erickson is out with a health issue, but we'll be covering for him. So, we will begin on item number three, recognition, Corey McIntyre.
Thank you very much, tonight it's, I am extremely privileged and honored to recognize Max Hanson, School Guidance Counselor Hudson Prairie Elementary, if you'd come up Max. Max will be receiving the 2012-2013 Wisconsin School Counselor Association, a Theo Brock Elementary School Counselor of the Year at the upcoming State Schools Counselor Conference. And this award is in recognition for providing outstanding service and achievement in school counseling. And Max is the only recipient at this level, the elementary level, this year for the state of Wisconsin. So I'm gonna take a chance, a moment to embarrass Max a little bit, because of some of the outstanding comments that were a part of his nomination package which he wasn't aware of was happening. His nomination from Mark Gillen, the Associate Professor and Department Chair of the Counseling and School Psychology Program at River Falls, made some outstanding comments about Max and really spoke to the multitude of programs that Max is involved in, including Big Brothers and Big Sisters and that he teaches our Love and Logic class to parents. He spoke to how Max goes out of his way to do the little visits and do the many little things that affect families. This is Max, 36 years Max in the district, teaching and as a school counselor. And something his Principal Susie Prather spoke to was the thousands of students and families that Max has touched over the years. And the part that keeps coming out are these little things that he does, he's out at the bus stops, he's where kids need help and support throughout the school day, whether it's the lunchroom or working with new children that come to the building. So we're very proud to have Max as the Principal of the Year representing, I'm sorry, Principal, you could do that job too, Max. Counselor of the Year for the state of Wisconsin and representing Hudson in that capacity. So I've asked Max to come up and say a few words, please.
Max, I know you're shy, but stand real close to the mic.
Well, if I would've known this was gonna happen, I would've had a different shirt on for that picture. I can tell you that for sure. You know, it really is an amazing honor and it certainly has floored me with that. And as I've reflected on it, I think it really speaks to the team that we really have here in Hudson. And, you know, I've dedicated much of my adult life to students here in Hudson, but it's not just me. You know, when I look at our pupil service team, it's a tremendously strong team with the counselors, the school psychologists, our AODA coordinator, and school social workers, and especially now with all the things that are happening in the country, that whole mental health component. And in Hudson, we've been able to have a strong team, and I think part of that is due to the administrative leadership that created it over the years, and then the ongoing leadership that continues with that. And I think also part of that team, for me personally, it certainly is my very nice understanding wife, who people that know her will say they can't understand really why she married me, and my two kids Natalie and Ryan, that I tell lots of Natalie and Ryan's stories in both the parenting group and also with the Love and Logic classes. But the other part is that team that we have with the educators, you know, the educators that I'm privileged to work with, work tremendously hard, and they care passionately about what they're doing. And also another component I think that for me is really unique about Hudson is the committed parent dynamic that we have. I would say 99 percent of the parents that I talk with or that interact with us at school care a lot about that quality of education, and they want their kids to really have that quality experience. I've had many parents over the years prior to coming to our schools that shop, and they come with a realtor, and they say they're checking out the schools, and they compare us with some of the really high-performing schools in the metropolitan area. And I think because of who we have in our school buildings, the educators, that whole team, that makes it really work for us here in Hudson. I'm gonna leave you with a thought, because it's been really humbling to me, I've gotten letters and cards from people I've lost touch with for over a number of years, but this was written by one of our first graders, Avery, who you can see on the outside, it's a card with some hearts and flowers on the front, and on the inside she has a Green Bay Packer logo, because I forgot to mention Susie Prather, my principal, who is phenomenal. And she supports what we do, and she supports me in being kinda goofy crazy sometimes, that it's, she's an amazing leader, but unfortunately, she's a Viking fan. So Avery knows that, so she gave me a Green Bay Packer, and she says here on the inside, and this really sums it up for me, "I'm happy for you. You're lucky to be in this school as a counselor."
Thank you, Max, I appreciate that. Thank you. Thank you, thank you, Max, thanks so much, and so well spoken too, about how it takes an entire team to do these types of things, but you bring a great deal of honor to our district on this statewide recognition, so thank you very much, thanks for what you do for our kids. And I so much appreciate the fact that you identify that it is a team, and that there are many players in this, and including our administration, which some people sometimes forget. And so, thank you, thanks so much. Okay, we'll move on then to Middle School Fuel Up to Play 60.
Thank you, our next recognition tonight is recognizing our middle school for the Fuel Up to Play 60 program that we put into place, and I'd like to ask Deb Gagnon to come up and to the mic here. Deb's our eighth grade family consumer science teacher from that department. And back in the spring, we heard a proposal to bring this program to the middle school, and through our Student Wellness Committee, we endorsed that process and really kinda turned it over to Deb, and boy, did we really get a bang for the buck on this. So, this program is really a program that's supported and brought to schools through the National Dairy Council, local dairy councils, and the National Football League, also supported by the US Department of Agriculture. So it's a nationwide program, but it needs local support to get off the ground. So I'm gonna let Deb explain through a few slides here and some awards that they've received for this, and she'll explain the great program we have in place.
All right, thank you very much, I'm honored to be recognized, but again, I want to reiterate how important, it wasn't just me who did this, it really is the students and the support of the administration and the faculty in making this a success. When I brought it up as a proposal, it was my intent to try to get the students involved in helping to endorse the importance of healthy eating and wellness. And when it comes from the students, if it's student-driven, I think they get more out of it, so that's the whole idea. So with the Fuel Up to Play 60 program, the students are the leaders, and they're the ones who are coming up with, how are they going to accomplish the tasks of getting the rest of the student body involved with encouraging eating healthy, being active, and making a difference in their lives. And we all know how important nutrition is for functioning minds and bodies, and so if we can get that message across. So the students, I've got a group of student ambassadors who are, it's kinda like a student council, I guess, but they're the ones that are coming up with how to get the rest of the students involved. And we initially, in the fall, received recognition for the pledge drive that we had for encouraging all the students in the middle school to be more aware of what they're eating and what they're doing in their free time, and encouraging the added physical activity. So we had a pledge, and on the slides, I know it's to some of your backs up there, but we had a pledge drive, and they had pledges plastered all over the walls in the cafeteria, in the hallways, and, you know, we've got an enrollment of a little over 1,300 students in the middle school, and we got over 1,000 pledges, 1,075 pledges, which put us over the 80 percent. And as a result, we were recognized, and we received one of the top awards from the Fuel Up to Play program, which was a signed or an autographed Green Bay Packer football helmet, which now is on display at the middle school. So, that was really encouraging to the kids, and now they're in the process of planning some other activities that we're going to be implementing in the last three or four months of school. A lot of this year was more to get the whole program kind of awareness and get it rolling. And we just received a thousand dollar grant to help us promote it, and get some equipment and some things to try to implement some of the physical activity in the classrooms and things. We also got a signed football from Jordy Nelson, I mean, we're doing things, and obviously the Fuel Up to Play program is excited about what we're doing, and the kids are excited, and they have great plans for taste testings in the cafeteria along with the nutrition services, they're a big part of this, physical education's a big part of it, and also the support of the rest of the district and faculty community is really important, but it's really the kids. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, thanks very much, thanks for all of your work on this. It's interesting, because you see on television quite often this Play 60, but you don't hear about necessarily the Fuel Up part, which I think, you know, coming from a background of physical education, is very just critical to the whole concept.
Yeah, you see the football league sponsoring it a lot, but it is cosponsored by the Dairy Association, and so they're really interested in the Fuel Up part and the eating healthy, so.
Wonderful, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thanks. More, more recognition coming with the Superintendent's Report, so Mary?
Mr. President and Board Members, I have the honor of announcing to our community a terrific and tremendous success and recognition of North Hudson Elementary, who has been named as a Wisconsin Title I High Achieving School. And they have received an award for that, this is the first group of high achieving Title I schools. And so as Principal Dolph Schmidt is coming forward, and the North Hudson staff, or at least a portion of the North Hudson staff that could be with us this evening, I'll tell you about the eligibility to qualify for this very high-regarded award. A school certainly must be a Title I receiving school, earn a rating of significantly exceeding expectations on the Wisconsin School Report Card, meet all annual measurable objectives for all students as well as student subgroups, have minimal achievement gaps or show evidence of reducing gaps between student groups, and meet test preparation, absenteeism, dropout goals. This is an enormous honor and recognition of the work that's being done at North Hudson. And I think Max said it very well, you know, he said, "We have educators who care passionately," and this is another example of that, because this comes from a dedicated collaborative team who has really focused on every student learning at higher levels. And I can tell if I say too much, I'll be taking all of Dolph's thunder about this, but it really comes from the work that they do each and every day with each student in every classroom, and their dedication to implementing best practices and making the changes that are necessary to support all students. So I will turn it over to Dolph for a few comments, and it is about both leadership, leadership at the principal level, leadership at the teacher level and support level as well, leadership across the school. Dolph?
All right, push it up. Thank you, Mary, and thank you Board for allowing North Hudson Elementary and myself to be here tonight in honor of the Wisconsin Title I High Achieving Rewards School. I want first to say this reward and/or award is really about the teachers, the support staff, and our volunteers, they're the ones that make it happen, I can't be more proud of my staff tonight. And I want to start first by letting each one of them introduce themselves to you using this mic, just their name and their position at North Hudson Elementary.
Jessica McQuade, I teach fourth grade.
Patty Shootnicked, I'm the kindergarten through fifth grade gifted and talented resource teacher.
Michelle Bier, third grade.
Greta Lewis, second grade.
Amanda Jury, first grade.
Paula Fireisen, fourth grade.
Deidra Blamer, second grade.
Sarah Rudisell, third grade.
Judy Green, special ed.
Kimberly Dolemeier, first grade.
Heather Matthews, fourth grade.
Linda Walbrun, a music specialist.
Laura Kiesler, kindergarten.
Chris Stropp, school counselor.
Cindy Viskasel, learning disabilities.
Rhiella Anfison, cognitive disabilities.
Marian Coulter, first grade.
Thank you, staff, and Mary, you're right, you stole some of my thunder, Max did too.
And I had more to say, darn, okay.
But really, I think this award is an example of things that happen not by chance. And when I, I had the ability to reflect on it over the weekend, we got the news on Thursday, I was able to let staff know on Friday about this award, and the things that I thought about was, we have a vision in this district that is alive and breathing, and we're taking action on it. And there's different pieces of that vision that ring true for different staff members. For me, I think of, I think of the beliefs, that's where I always anchor myself, and Max actually hit on two of the three that really come to mind. One is all students will learn and perform at high levels and all staff, collaboration and teamwork are keys to our success, and education is a partnership between student staff, parents, and the community. And really, the collaboration and the partnerships that we have to be able to have our students really reaching at really high levels. But I wanted to tell a little bit of our story, because the piece that I'm the proudest about this award is it's tied to work we've been doing for several years, it's just at the state level, they've acknowledged, they've been able to gather the data from state testing that really has been data that we've worked with, and so I would like to tell that story to you. In the year, the school year 09-010, part of our SMART Goal work was looking at our end-of-the-year reading goals and achievements with our students, and we had 86 percent of our students in that year meeting our year-end target, pretty good, right? But when we broke that data down a little bit more, we knew that some students weren't reaching that goal. When we looked at our free and reduced lunch students or lower socioeconomic students, only 70 percent of those students were meeting our year-end target. Then the question was, how could we close that gap? And you may think, first of all, we have to identify those students, we have to work one-on-one on that, with them, and we have to do things differently with those students. But what we did as a team is we really dove into, well, what were the best practices? And we found out, yes, socioeconomic status is, makes a difference, it has an impact, a pretty big impact, but what we found out, it was, there's very, a lot of things that we have control over and we can make a difference on that are educational practices. And as a staff, we really landed on three things, taking a look at our interactive learning targets, being really clear with what we want our students to learn and be able to do, and give them some really good feedback that has a higher impact than their socioeconomic status. And we spent a lot of time learning about it and implementing that piece. We looked at how we could build stronger teacher-student relationships, and at the core of those relationships was the belief that all students could achieve. And I'll give a couple examples of that, that I think, they're not classroom, they're specialist examples. But Mrs. Walbrun's here tonight, and if you've ever come to any of her concerts, she finds absolutely the right fit for all students, whether they're at Promise, special ed, any other category, she finds the right fit to allow those students to shine, to be involved in activities that maybe they won't get another chance in their career. Last week, we also had our all-school dance, huge hit, but one of the things that it does is it builds really strong relationships between our students and our staff. We participate, and all the students get an opportunity to learn, learn some dance moves, decide, hey, is show choir going to be something I'm going to be interested in in the future, dance, and get to enjoy some time with their teachers also dancing. And this year, we actually had surprise flash mob where the parents danced at the end too. But just another example of how we're trying to build strong relationships, I'm sure you all have mentors, teachers that connected with you, that pushed you, that helped you achieve more than you thought you could achieve, and that's another thing that has a really stronger impact than socioeconomic status. The third one that we've worked on is reinforcing effort compared to ability, and that's a shift from, a shift to a growth mindset. So it's the idea that, for students, if you keep trying, if you keep persevering, if you keep on doing the tough work, you'll get to the goal that we want for you, short-term goal, long-term goal, and with that, providing them recognition when they're meeting those steps along the way. Much like, I'm sure this night is for us, we've had a lot of hard work along the way, and it's a great thing to get recognized for the hard work and to be able to see the fruits of your labor really, really come to pass. So those are some of the things that we've done, based off of some data that we've collected, and that was internal data. And what has happened since 09-010, so in 09-010, 70 percent of our free and reduced lunch kiddos were reading at grade level. And the school year 10,000, in 10-11, 75 percent were reading at grade level. And last year, 77 percent. So the internal data that we had was showing we were making a difference. And these were putting in practices that are good for all students. We didn't identify kiddos, we just knew that putting in good practices, we could help all. And you know our SMART Goal results, we've shifted that bell curve, we have more kiddos meeting that year-end target globally, and also in our building with a smaller group of students. Now with that said, that number is maybe larger than you think. So at North Hudson, you know, our building's about 340 students, the last couple of years, that's a group of 60 kiddos. So it's a lot of kiddos that we're talking about by helping to achieve at higher levels. And so, tonight, again, I just, I'm so proud of my staff. I also wanted to point out that we've taken a look at those high-achieving school districts for a long time, and Hudson is on that list with this award, along with some that we always look at. Cedarburg received one of these awards, Germantown, Kettle Moraine, Muk Wannago, and Whitefish Bay. And so when you're taking a look at comparing them, you know, we know the data that Sandy has shown over time, but we have some other indicators that we keep moving forward, we keep improving, and all of this is to help the kiddos that we service. One final remark I would like to make is, this population sometimes is invisible, it's not invisible in our school, it's not invisible in the schools in the Hudson area, but I think sometimes in the community, it's invisible. This idea of the lower socioeconomic students and a gap being there is one that we probably don't communicate enough, and I think if the Board has opportunities to make connections with the Hudson community and ways that we can continue to support those students and families, I think that would be a great partnership. So I'd just like to end again with thank you to my staff for the work they do, day in and day out, because the things that they are doing definitely matters that are making a difference, so thank you.
Thank you, thank you. Teachers, don't go anywhere, just for a second, we made you come here tonight, and we want you to look at us when we tell you how proud we are of you. And not only you, obviously, but Dolph and the administration, the support staff, and our Superintendent of Schools. We, I've been on this board now for about seven years. Early on in that tenure, the idea, the idea of SMART Goals, and the idea of visioning and treating every student individually, and setting quantitative goals and things like that, was fairly new to this district and frankly, fairly new to society, and how are the teachers gonna handle this, and how are they gonna embrace this? It just goes to prove you that if you take the passion of the teachers that we have in this district and have always had, passion, and put it with vision and quantifiable targets and so forth, and see that come together, that creates a tremendous amount of excitement and enthusiasm, and I wanted you to look at me when I said to you, "Thank you." So, that's all I had to say, Pat?
I'd like to speak. I want to thank you all, and three years ago, when I was elected, I was, had the honor and privilege to go through your school and all the grade schools, and with Mary's help and with the teachers allowing me to come in and see as you were working, it was amazing. And as I, that's where I learned what was happening in our schools. And I was amazed, and I was, I'm truly humbled, and I was, I'm thankful to the community that I was able to serve you guys, but you guys did the work, and I thank you, thank you so much.
So thanks again, thanks very much for coming tonight, thanks for taking time, and we really do appreciate it very much, everything that you've done. And also wanted to shout out to the other schools as well. I mean, the other schools are making unbelievable accomplishments and headway with our SMART Goals. You are being recognized for a lot of the work that's been happening over the years, and I gotta believe that there's more recognitions coming too, so, thanks. Okay, moving on to State Superintendent Tony Evers' visit, Mary?
Yes, the State Superintendent visited us, the district, yesterday, and he was traveling around to a few school districts in the state in the celebration of Career and Technical Education Month. And Hudson was one of those places where he wanted to see our programs and results with our students. He was accompanied by Mark Tyler, who is founder and president of OEM Fabricators out of Woodville, and Mark is also president of the Wisconsin Technical College System Board, and he's a member of the University of Wisconsin System Board of Regents, so certainly representing our area well, and I serve with Mark on the UW River Falls Chancellor's Advisory Council. So, the State Superintendent looked at our middle school and high school programs in the area of career and tech ed, and also our high school learning for the future briefly was showcased as well with a video and comments by Principal Love. We had students, teachers, administrators, business and industry, and post-secondary partners speaking to the State Superintendent and talking about the programs and the partnership and collaboration that we have that's making a difference for our students. We toured the tech ed wing of the high school, and then he had a few comments for the district, and one thing that stood out that he talked about was how impressed he was with the collaboration that was evident from, with our community and our post-secondary partners. And so that was some, one of the things that he pointed out that I think we should all certainly value, and we value highly. I certainly want to thank School to Career Coordinator Melissa Hanson for coordinating Dr. Evers' visit, and it was an outstanding, very quick time with him, with many, many programs showcased, and I believe there will be an article in Hudson Star Observer about that, and Max kind of shaking her head, so you can learn more there. So it was a great morning to have him in the Hudson School District and celebrating our middle school and high school career to tech ed efforts. So I'll move on to the next item on the Superintendent's Report unless there's some questions or comments.
That's not.
All right, so, next is the January 11, 2013 official enrollment report, and as you know, there are two official enrollments that we report to the Department of Public Instruction and- Instruction, and these student enrollment numbers are used for our state aid. And if you look at the column that says DPI totals on the chart, and you look at the green box, I think it's colored.
Yes.
Okay. And, and you look at the September 21st, 2012 totals, for the number of students served, it's 5,626. And that was the third Friday in September, another official count, and then January, the second Friday, is the second official count. So January 11th, 2013, and that total is 5,622. So that's a change of four students. And if you look at each of the schools, you can see some schools went up a little, some schools went down a little. And basically, when we look at our enrollment in January, it's a stable enrollment. The high school has the largest change in the number of students, but that is very common at this time of year. We have students who have early graduation, as well as other factors, but certainly we've seen that on January reports frequently. Another thing I'll just point out that is on this chart for the first time this school year, is the homeschool enrollment. We had that in September, it was fifty-eight students, but actually, homeschooled families don't need to register a report until after the third Friday in September, so that number is incomplete. So now we have one hundred and thirty-one of our students in the Hudson School District being homeschooled. So if you have any questions, I'll be happy to try to answer those.
Any questions?
All right. Then I'll go on to our kindergarten registration for next year, and the comparison with previous So this year, the preliminary registration that just happened in the beginning of February, we have three hundred and one students registered. And what we know is that number, by past experience, is going to increase before we start school in September. So if we look at each of the years, if we look at February 2011, we had three hundred and fifty-three students, certainly more students, but that number increases again to four hundred and twenty-eight on the third Friday. The next year, in February of 2012, we had three hundred and twenty-one students. And again, that number is just a little under four hundred, and if we looked at the third, second count in January, second Friday count in January, they have six more students. So the numbers continue to change, and we know that preliminary registration will change as well. There is a note at the bottom of the page that says, "Next year's kindergarteners are really having, coming from September 2007 births to September twenty-eight, or 2008 birth rates." And those have been lower. In 2007's, we had more births, 2008, and, and I'm, these are births in St. Croix County, because that's, those are the numbers that we have to track. Those births started to go down, 2009, they went down a little further, and then 2010, they were actually more than they were in 2007. So these are the numbers that we have. Oftentimes, our kindergarten enrollment reflects those numbers, and we were expecting that we would have a lower kindergarten enrollment this next year, with those students coming in particularly in the year 2008. And we all know 2008 was a recession year, and certainly something that may have affected those birth rates as well. If there are any questions, I'd, again, be open to answering those.
Mr. President, Mary, do you recall if Hazel Reinhardt's numbers also showed a decline based on, I mean, I know she always said that when the economy slows down, it's lower birth rates, but I couldn't remember if hers showed that as well.
I don't know, but I can look that up and, and get that back to you.
Okay, thank you.
I just would comment on, we've seen this pattern in the past that's been moving through our schools, where there are a few years where there is a lower birth rate, and it's followed, and so our class size numbers are lower during those years, and then that moves through the system, and it's followed by higher class sizes. So that has happened in the past because of the fluctuation in the number of children born, or the number of children that move into our district. So this is something that we've seen in the past.
Are there questions or comments? Okay, we'll move on then to reports, and in Tim Erickson's absence, Mary will introduce the 2011-12 financial audit.
In August, yes, and if you would come forward, please, I'll introduce you in just a minute, as I have some introductory remarks, representing Tim this evening. In August of each year, we have our auditors come in from Clifton, Larson, Allen, and go through our finances and report out to you each year. And so with us from that firm are Steve Tracy and Tom Cordis, and then Mark Cumlin, who supports their work. Our financial services manager, working with Tim, is here to answer any questions that you might have in Tim's stead. So I'm going to turn it over to Steve and Tom to talk about the audit and financial report.
Okay.
Up is on.
We're all set? Good.
Yep.
Okay. We're here tonight to just, I think, just briefly give you a synopsis of the audit and the overview of the audit. Tom and I previously met with the Finance Committee on January 28th, and got more in-depth with the financials and, and the reports and so on, and, and everything went very well there. And so, we were requested just to come here and give you a, a quick synopsis. Our purpose here is to, when we come in and do the audit, is to, you know, examine and test the financial records, the underlying documents, including outside sources and, and whatever, in order to give us a confidence level to issue an opinion on your financial statements, which we have issued a unqualified opinion on the financial statements, which basically say that, that they are, in all material respects, fairly represent the financial operations and the results thereof of your June 30th, 2012 year financials. The, in addition to doing that, we also need to do compliance audits of various federal and state programs that you get, which are required both by, by federal and state agencies. And I'm happy to note that we had no compliance issues on any of the programs that we tested. And in terms of our management letter or report on internal controls done as a result of doing the audit, we had only one finding. It was a finding that relates to the fact that we, as the audit firm, prepare your financial statements rather than you prepare them, they're your financial statements, or rather than you draft them all up and then give them to us. Part of the whole audit process is that we end up preparing those. That is not unusual at all. In fact, I think all but maybe one of our school districts and all of our other governmental clients have that same finding. This is, I think, somewhat of an expected service of the audit, that we would, as a result of pulling together the information, that we would also draft those financial statements. And, so that, as a result, because they are supposed to be your financials and not ours, we need to put that into a finding. And, and again, that's very consistent with almost all of our other clients. We had no finding in relation to material audit adjustments. We had some very minor audit adjustments. So that gives you very good assurance that the numbers that you're seeing coming from Tim and Mark into the monthly and the annual reports are, are very representative of the, of the numbers, and, and they do not deviate at all from where we ended up with our audit report. So, the financial records were in, in good shape. Tim and Mark do an excellent job on the records. Tom is in charge of the field work and does an excellent job in terms of the audit, and they had very good cooperation, and the audit went very well. We have a short timeframe due to DPI's timing. Your, your fiscal year ends June 30th. DPI wants audited numbers to them, not necessarily in forms of the audit report. Incidentally, I don't know if everyone received one of those, but not necessarily in terms of the completed audit report, but they want audited numbers back to them by September 1, because of the AIDS calculation. And so, again, there is a short timeframe throughout the state of Wisconsin in relation to school district audits. And, but everything went very, very well.
Wonderful. I know it's not always easy to get numbers closed out at end of years to get that, that audit prepared, so, from other businesses. So I appreciate the extra effort on your part, as well as the, the district's part on that. I know this was reviewed by the Finance Committee, and, and were there any comments from the Finance Committee?
Mr. Chair, just a couple of comments. The Finance Committee did meet with our auditors and go through this material and spent a fair amount of time going over it. And I guess the things that stand out for me is just the fact that our finance department, with Mark and Tim and the rest of that team, did what I think was a very outstanding job in, in working with the auditors and providing information. And as Steve pointed out, we had sort of a short window of time to work with in, in gathering this data, and I'm guessing it's a fair amount of financial data that they have to pull together. The only other comment, as I'm sort of looking at this material that stands out for me, is that it looks like we had, which I think is good for the district, eleven percent reduction in our outstanding long-term obligations, which I think, you know, for us to continue to reduce that debt, and I, I believe we're also continuing to look at ways to refinance our current debt whenever we have the opportunity and save money in that regard. And I think if you recall from past, you know, evaluations of our long-term debt and refinancing, over, over a number of years, we've been able to save, you know, quite a few thousands of dollars in being able to go through that process. So, again, thanks to our auditors and to our finance team, so, that's all I had.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions from the board? Okay. I know this district has long been good stewards of, of the finances, and I know Clifton, Larson, Allen has been, I think, our auditors for quite a few of those years. It's probably helped in some respect, too, familiarity in terms of our being able to turn those things, that audit around in the time that is, is needed as well. So, very proud of that. Thank you. I guess there's no other questions. Thanks for coming.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, we're going to hear from Cory regarding, regarding high school program Flip It Forward.
Thank you, and it's my pleasure tonight to introduce Principal Laura Love from Hudson High School, along with Dana Crambeal, our AODA Prevention Specialist. So if they come up, I'll just say a few remarks. The Flip It Forward program is designed to work to transform the school culture with student leadership, to make environmental and targeted changes, promote a environment of understanding and acceptance, and also work to increase student voice by reducing bullying and harassment. And this is a presentation that has been recognized at the state level recently, and we felt it was important for you to hear about the really positive work that's happening and the results we're getting. I'm glad to see we have some student representation here tonight, too. So I'll turn it over to Dana and Laura. Thank you.
All right. First of all, I'd like to welcome Hank Bruckey, sophomore at Hudson High School here, and you'll see some of his work in our program that we have here today. Well, first of all, Flip It Forward started about two years ago when River Falls High School, am I, and, okay.
You're pretty good, though.
All right. I have a pretty strong voice, I think, sometimes. Flip It Forward started about two years ago when River Falls High School invited us down there with a group of students to kind of learn about this program. And one of the biggest outcomes of that positively, as you all know, River Falls is our biggest rival, and all of our students exchanged phone numbers and Facebook information, so that was outcome good, number one. So as we move forward, the students came back from this very extremely motivated that they wanted to do this in our school, and so we kind of adapted it to our needs at Hudson High School. And some of the things that we recognized was huge changes as this started taking off. We started surveying the students and asked them, "What are you seeing? What are you recognizing?" And ninety-one percent of them said, "You're changing our school environment simply by mutual respect amongst social groups." A lot of them will say, "It's kind of, you walk through the hallways now, and after you've experienced flip with somebody, it's kind of that general head nodding acknowledgement type thing." They also feel that they've made a lot more genuine connections with each other and with the staff members that are involved, so some of those are huge positives. Some other things that we've noticed is the amount of leadership. After starting this program with thirty students, I am now over two hundred student leaders. These are primarily sophomores through seniors who are very actively involved in this process. Really, there's no leadership from adults, it's all these students leading us forward. And we've got upcoming people that have not been participating in Flip It Forward that are very eagerly waiting for their opportunity, so this is hugely increasing. As we move on, the purpose, as Cory had kind of stated, was literally just to understand and accept each other for who we are, for what our perceived image is, and kind of break beyond those barriers to actually get to know each other, and just kind of creating this environment of, you know, really understanding and accepting each other for what is underneath. A lot of times, what we hear is the iceberg effect. We truly only show about ten percent of who we really are, when ninety percent of it is hidden. And that's where Flip It Forward kind of breaks down that barrier so that we actually get to know each other a little beyond that. As we continue on, you'll see some more similarities coming out of that survey we've done with our students. And the biggest thing is them learning not to judge each other. You'll find that you have different education levels, you have different interests. They're finding that no matter what it may look like on the outside, when you really get to know someone, they're all the same person. These activities that they do are very simple activities. Simple things as far as visually crossing the line based off of a statement. The statements that we say are both positive and sometimes challenging, so some of them may be cross the line if you have a love for music. About ninety-nine percent of them cross that line for that question. But then when you ask them to cross the line if you've been affected by somebody with depression or suicide, you start to really see the amount of people that you have similarities and differences with, and they kind of accept that. Then, based off of those activities, too, we break down into small circles where they open up with a statement, simply say, "If you really knew me, you would know," and then they fill in the blank. And this continues to go round and round for multiple rounds. And kids, you would be surprised, and Hank will be able to speak to this, they are ready for you to know who they are. And within that circle, they share some great accomplishments and some deep concerns. We've had some of that that needed to be addressed as well, but really, kids come out of those circles and they feel like a sense of relief, almost. They feel like people understand, people truly listen, and people truly care. As we go on, you can kind of see some feedbacks from the students, what they say. And the biggest thing, too, is the fact that we are validating their voices. We're allowing their experiences to be understood, to be shared, and that the fact that they can actually utilize their voice as a powerful tool, which Laura will speak to here shortly. We get tons of requests from students, it's kind of interesting. There's not a day that goes by that there is not a student request for another flip. And as you go on, you'll see that some of the parents also kind of share that the fact that they are looking for their students to be involved. We've noticed, just based off of some of the stuff that it was brought up in flips, these students went home and shared those experiences with their parents, and it kind of bridged the communication gaps at home as well. Other things that we are seeing with the flip program is that our advisory system in the high school is now growing stronger because they are bringing deep topics into that communication circle and utilizing those skills as well. So flip in general just brings awareness to teen issues, and as we go on, you can feel that they really have a sense of support for each other. I'll kind of let Laura speak a little bit more now to the general overall broad impact, and then we'll hear from Hank and his expertise that he brought to this.
So Diane, if you can move to the next slide. One of the things that we've seen is an increase in student voice at the high school. And I think students feel like we're beginning to listen to who they are as people once they've gone through the Flip It Forward program. And so after we began this program in the spring of 2011, I had a student approach me and ask if she could start an anti-bullying program at Hudson High School. And she felt like there were too many people bullied, and she had been bullied in the past. This was a student in special ed, and I was concerned that she was all alone. This was a student in special ed, and I was concerned that she was all alone and that she wasn't going to get the kind of support needed to really make an anti-bullying effort at the whole school level huge and successful. And then, students who had participated in the Flip It Forward program started communicating with their teacher about things that they wanted to do at Hudson High School, and it really matched up with the anti-bullying efforts of this student. And so, we, the teacher and I, made a connection between the students, and she got a lot of support behind her. Since then, she started the Pink Shirt Day at Hudson High School last year. And Pink Shirt Day is modeled after a group from New Zealand where two students went out and bought 50 pink t-shirts because one of their classmates, who was a freshman boy, had worn a pink shirt to school and was being harassed or bullied. And so, she took, she picked this up, and she wanted to bring it to Hudson High School and got the art department involved and got a shirt created and began to, she purchased the shirts and began to sell shirts for very low costs so that we could make a statement at Hudson High School that bullying isn't tolerated. So, since then, every last Wednesday of the month, Pink Shirt Day is what we do at Hudson High School. Most of the staff participate in some way, whether it's a pink tie or pink pants or something pink. And then, some of our students participate with pink t-shirts or Love Pink, which is a, a what?
Victoria's Secret.
Victoria's Secret kind of thing, so. But I didn't say that out loud. But what we've seen, then, is that this, these efforts have had a broader impact in the school. And I think you know of the efforts the middle school brought to anti-bullying a few years ago with the revealers. And so, we know that our students are more aware of bullying and harassment, and yet our bullying and harassment report numbers have gone down. We believe that it's because the students are really being, taking over. They're learning, if you go to the next slide, Diane, they are learning bystander skills in the Flip It Forward. So, when they see bullying happen, they know to stand up because they've now made some deeper connections with other students they didn't know at all before. Staff can't be everywhere in the halls. We only have 160 or so staff members total for 10 times that many students. And we believe strongly that when the students take over the hallways in a positive way, that will really change the culture for all kids because we can't be everywhere. Also, when a student steps up, when they see some bullying happen, it's way more effective than when a staff member steps in and talks to the two individuals separately because then it can happen at another time when an adult isn't around. But if the students know that other students are taking action, it's often way more effective to stop it in the future. If you go to the next slide, we are looking at cost benefit, always looking at cost benefit. And one of the things that I think Dana has been able to bring in her current position is one passionate person involved in this activity. She's really built it into the other things she does. She built it into the grant writing that she does. The only costs that we've incurred as a school is really through grant money and donations. So, none of our funds that we, that our taxpayers provide have paid for the program. But essentially, the only costs we've had are Kleenex boxes, lots of them, and t-shirts for the Flip It Forward leaders, and then minimal amounts of water and things like that for the training activities. The other piece that I'll mention is time. Time is a really important factor that we feel strongly about this program, and so we build it in at appropriate times throughout the year. This year, we were able to flip, as we call it, eight of the sophomore advisories in the afternoon on the day then they, when they took the planned test. So, rather than try to have 15-minute classes or, you know, do other volunteer activities, when these kids are asking for flip, we were able to kind of take a pretty stressful day. And although it's emotionally stressful in the afternoon, I think they're very relieved when they get involved in the activity and feel like they can make a difference. So, it's had a benefit not only in all of the students, but we think it's really expanded our other co-curricular activities like SAD and advisory and student council and AMP and Youth Action Hudson in the community. And I think Hank will tell you a little bit more from a student perspective about what he thinks this kind of program has brought to our student body.
Before Flip It Forward last year, last year was when it really became active, you, bullying was never really a problem at our school, but you knew it was there. You would see people in the hallway that you would think, "Oh, I don't know if they're going to point me out or something." And now, you see those people and you don't, you don't think, "Oh, I'm worrying what they might say about me." You know that they could be going through something the same, and you understand, like, their point of view, and they understand yours, too. With leaders, when students are going through Flip It Forward, they don't, at the beginning, they don't know what they're going to go through. And by the end, it's kind of overwhelming of all of the students are trying to join and be leaders because they want to do it again. And they want to help more students become leaders, and they want to help more students, like, feel safe in their school. So, it's spreading a lot.
With all of the intensive information that's shared, one of the things that Dana has really laid out well is confidentiality and that whatever's said here stays here. With over 400 students having participated in Flip It Forward, we haven't had one situation ever in a year and a half when a student breached that confidentiality. So, it really shares with us the value that students find, even when sometimes students who didn't like each other or get along have been put together in a circle. So, I think that's a testament to the students and also to the value they find in the program.
We got one more slide before our short video here. What you're seeing here, as I said before, we did that survey with students afterwards. I had them identify one word that they could explain the Flip It Forward experience, how it affected them, what they thought of it. And as the words are listed up here, the larger the words, the more response. And like I said, I did not have them pick from a choice group of words. They were supposed to just identify a word. And the biggest ones up there, understanding and united. Like I said, I get numerous requests to do this again, and particularly by grade. Freshmen want to do it, and then our outgoing seniors definitely want to do it as a grade so they have a way to be united. And I think that's great for a district like ours. One last thing that we have is a very short video that was put together by Hank that is kind of a collaboration of all of our students, just kind of giving you one perspective on what flip is like.
Can you just advance to the next screen? Oh. Is that no sound?
There any sound?
There's no sound to it?
Oh, no.
Oh, shoot.
Well. There you go.
It's coming.
Oh, can you put a microphone on there?
We all have a story, positive or negative. So, why do we allow opinions of others to affect our self-esteem and confidence? Flip challenges those barriers and helps create an environment of understanding and acceptance. The circles deepen students' emotional expression as they break away from past images. They reflect by asking themselves what truly matters is how they choose to move forward.
You kind of think back, and you're just like, "I shouldn't really judge them."
Now, we're cracking sisters.
I think the only other thing I would add, because we didn't mention it earlier, is that we have had staff involvement in the circles. The advisors have participated in the process, and what we've seen is really an eye-opening experience for some staff members about what their students bring to the classroom. And so, they've been able to make some deeper connections with students, whether they're in their own classes or in their advisory or not.
Terrific. Thank you. Any other comments, Mary?
I just want to add, Dana and Laura presented this at the school board convention in January, and it was very, very well received, and you should have seen the lines to talk to each one of them about this. Certainly, a extremely low-cost program that has the capacity to break down a large high school and make students feel much more a part of it, be more engaged in it, and feel connections to students and to teachers and staff. And so, what a wonderful program. And again, we have a number of examples tonight of work that comes from passion. So, certainly, this is Dana's passion, and I certainly appreciate her leadership and Laura's support for this program expanding at Hudson High School.
And Hank helped us present this past week to the secondary school principals. So, we had four students. Hank was one of them and has been a leader not only in creating our videos, but in the Flip It Forward program as well.
So, thank you, Hank, and Dana, and Laura. A question regarding this is, is this a program that's nationally done, or how did you come across this program?
This program originated out in California called The Challenge Day, but that program is a three-to-five-day-long program that costs about $5,000. Some of the students may know it very similarly on an MTV show that was called If You Really Knew Me. So, the concepts are all kind of the same, but like I said, after we went to River Falls and kind of experienced it with them, we realized that really, the components of it are very simple, and we don't need to make it an extended program at much cost. So, the components are there nationally.
Terrific. Just an editorial comment that, you know, we do so much more than just teach academics, don't we? I mean, and really, the work that you're doing regarding creating a culture of acceptance, I think, aids the academics, frankly. I think people, when kids are free to be themselves and feel free to be themselves, I think that opens up the door for them to be their best in academics as well, so.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Thank you, if I may. You know, education takes many forms, and it takes place in and out of the classroom. This is important work. These are important life skills. And I don't think all the math and science knowledge in the world will do you any good if you can't navigate society and all the challenges it presents. And it seems to be more complicated each passing year. But this is important work. I really, I'm very excited that we're doing this. Thank you. Thank you, Hank, for sharing your experience with us. And keep up the good work.
Mr. President, just a question is, how many students have been through this program?
The survey was of 398, but that was approximately about a third of the way in when I realized I needed to start getting some survey numbers because this was catching fire. So, I would assume about 500 to 600 students have actually experienced flip in a total.
And they do it during their advisories?
It's been a variety of different things. At first, we did it kind of during advisory. A flip normally takes about an hour and a half to two hours to complete. So, we did it during their advisory plus one extra class period. And then, we expanded it to find that it fits our schedule better if we do it, like, on a testing day when the rest of the day is a lightened schedule, I guess.
Mr. President. I had the privilege to go to the Wisconsin School Board Convention, and I was able to come in and hear. And I remember you talking about Flip It Forward last spring, somebody talked about it, but I had no idea how beneficial and how, you know, you were doing this until I heard the two of them speak. And I definitely encouraged that you bring it in here to teach us all and let us all know, and I thank you for that. And Hank wasn't there, he would have been an asset if he would have been able to be there. Thank you for what you have given to us tonight, and thank you.
Lynn, you have something?
Mr. President, I just had a question. I imagine when you're talking about If You Really Knew Me circles, are there things that come up there that, and I know there's, it's confidential, so there's, maybe you can just talk generally about it, but are there things that students identify where we need to find them help or get them more resources throughout this process? And how do we handle that and keep that confidentiality in place where, you know, people don't feel like they can't come there and talk about things, but?
Definitely. Well, like I say to all the kids, my number-one rule of thumb is we play at Lake Vegas. So, what's said here stays here. So, I tell them that they can, you know, share the experience but not share the details. But a lot of times, in those little small circles, things do come out that are concerning. We've had approximately three mandatory reports come out, and what happens is we don't address it at that point in time. We address it afterwards through a counselor or something like that. And all three of those situations have said, "It's time that somebody knew what was going on." But they didn't feel like they had the courage to step forward at that point. One of the other things that happens is afterwards, all my student leaders, we kind of do a little debrief to say, "How are you guys doing? Anything that we need to be concerned of?" And the amount of concerns that they bring forth, too, just saying, "I want somebody to check on this student because, you know, I'm afraid for them," or, you know, "They've got a lot of stuff going on in their suitcase that they bring to school." So, we kind of are doing extra duty, helping our counselors kind of expand those services by our students kind of self-monitoring each other, so.
Great. Thanks for that. Dana, thanks for your work, and Hank, thanks for the video, and thanks for coming here and talking to us about the program. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I want to thank you, too. It sounds like a great program, and you've gone to the effort to bring it here. It's going to be very beneficial. Did I hear you say that all ninth, 10th, 11th, and 12th are all involved in this, or just the 10th, 11th, and 12th right now?
We started last, two years ago, two years ago with leaders from the ninth, 10th, and 11th grades. They've moved into the 10th, 11th, and 12th grades.
Okay.
We haven't had this, we haven't had freshmen go through this. We will be having the freshmen do Flip It Forward on their testing day this spring. But not all the juniors and seniors have gone through it, but we do have junior and senior leaders who have been through it.
All right. But this is something that's...
Primarily sophomores.
Is it is available, that freshmen could do it if they wanted to?
Freshmen could do it. We actually wait, we don't do it at the beginning of the year with freshmen.
Okay.
We were planning on the MAP testing day that we have in April, so most of the way through the year, and then having the freshmen experience this.
Do you think that this is the kind of thing that could be beneficial in the middle school level?
We've talked about that, but we're a little bit worried for two reasons. One, it's a little too deep for, we think, some middle school students to handle, and it could be modified, maybe, to help middle school students. But secondly, we think it's a really good way for high school students to come together at a time when they have a lot of challenges. And so, if they're experiencing it at the middle school and then they come to the high school, again, they kind of feel like, "Well, this is a middle school thing."
It might not be as important to them.
But I think it's, yeah, and I think it's really some heavy stuff. I mean, the Kleenex box, I'm not kidding, I was running that around on the day that they had many circles in the gym and in the commons and that sort of thing. And as Hank said, or Dana said in the debriefing, there's some things that the leaders debrief about that are really heavy things that need to go to counselors.
All right. Thank you. You answered my questions. Thank you. And thank you for bringing the program here.
Yep.
Thanks again. Diane, I don't know if we have any citizens' requests to speak?
No.
Okay. And we'll move on then to topics for discussion. County UU property with or without city utilities as a secondary school site in Tim's absence. Mary's going to present this.
Kick this off. So, administration brought this topic to the Facilities and Grounds Committee at their last meeting for discussion, and they supported bringing the discussion to the full board. You know, and we're working on identifying a long-term secondary space for learning solution. There are really two parts to that, or two major parts to that. One is the long-term plan, or what will be built and how will the current buildings be used. And so, we presently have three options that start to address that, that you've identified for further consideration. And then, another question, certainly a major question, is if something's going to be built, where will it be built? So, we own the UU property, and that has... So we own the UU property, and that has been considered as a secondary school site. And we also know that it has significant limitations as a site as well. We have gained information from engineers about that site. And based on that, the information that we've received verbally in the area of water and treatment of the wastewater, they have said that without water and sewer, that site could probably only support about the same size school as an elementary school and looking at River Crest. So about 650 students. Not exact, but that's what they told us. They did also say it cannot support a school for 2,000 students. So, not a large school, in its current, the way it currently is, currently is without water and sewer. We don't know how large a school it can support. We just know it can't support a large high school on that site. And so, it would need public utilities, water and sewer, certainly. They would have to come from the city of Hudson. So to know what, how large a school we could build, whether it's for 1,000, or whether it's for 800, or whatever it is, that needs further exploration and certainly investment to get that exploration. When, as you know, when the city of Hudson, the Plan Commission and the City Council considered rezoning St. Cray Meadows, there were statements that were made about the UU property, about creating a special district for that to bring public utilities to the UU site. We had always talked to the city about annexation, which we did not receive any positive comments about. But there were some statements about this special water district. And to be clear, the statements, there were no statements that they would. They were statements that it was possible. And so certainly, that's where it stands at the present time. That's what we know. And that wasn't made by everybody, that was made by some people. So we have three options, as you know, that you've identified for further consideration. Two of those options are constructing large schools. So it's constructing a four-year high school or constructing a three-year high school. And none of those options could work on the UU site as it presently is, based on the information we've received, without public utilities being brought to that site. So there's only one option that looks like it could be on that site, and that's the grade 612 school. It could be built there. So knowing that, we felt that it was important for the board to talk about whether you are interested in pursuing city water and sewer, or how large a school on the site we can have that can be supported without those public utilities. So this evening, it's just a discussion. There are no decisions to be made at this time. But we need some direction. Maybe there's some questions that you would like us to pursue and get some answers for. This certainly would require, as the city identified, feasibility studies in the area of water and sewer that could be part of this process of exploration as well. So I turn it over to the President and the board members.
Okay, so as Mary had indicated, this is a discussion that we just recently had as the Facilities Committee. And our purpose was, tonight, was just to bring this to the board and get your counsel. There won't be any action on it tonight, but we would like to hear your direction, hear your thoughts or questions about it. And then, from here then, we would probably then go back as a Facilities Committee and come back with a recommendation, so. So, any-
Mr. President.
Yeah, Lynn.
I would like to pursue discussions with the city and find out the feasibility of bringing public utilities, sewer, and water out to the site. I think it's a piece of information that we're going to need to be able to make any further decision that we make, so I, for one, would like to support that.
I just should point out that I think the rub on the discussion is regarding whether or not we go through the cost of something that we're not sure we can actually fulfill or go through, move forward with, that type of thing. So, in terms of the cost, I don't know that we had a projected cost. We really, really didn't at this point. But that's kind of the rub, I guess is what I'm, I'm having a hard time kind of describe.
Mr. President. In other words, before we go into the cost of seeing what we can put on there, we need to know if water and sewer will be brought out there. And if not, in my opinion, it's not usable for a school.
And I don't know that, that was part of our discussion, Pat, too, is that I don't know that the city's in a position where they can say they can do it. I mean, I think the best we could probably get from them in just some discussions before going to, before they're allowed to go to an actual City Council meeting or Plan Commission meeting to vote on it. I don't know that they can give us an answer that they would allow it. They could give us possibly the feeling or the things that we'd have to consider or something, so. All right?
Mr. President.
Yeah, Mark.
Well, as, and I guess repeating some of the comments we made in the committee. From my perspective, I think some of the analysis that had to be done on that site could be rather extensive to nail down what we could or could not do in there. So I would want to know, I guess, from the city first, if they could do it, if they had that capacity, because I think that maybe somewhat in question has been raised before, and also their willingness to do that. Now, what type of commitment they would be willing to proffer, but I don't want to go forward with thousands of dollars of engineering studies if they just have a mild interest in extending water there. I would want them to know, I would want them to be a committed partner in us moving forward on this, because it would be expensive.
Brian?
Yeah, I completely agree. I think we need to ask the City Council, can we partner on this? And can we do, you know, X amount of work? And can you make a decision that you would or would not? Because we had information before that they wouldn't, from, you know, from various members that they would do this annexation, you know, they want to partner with us with the dog track, and that ended up being, so I think we need to, I think hopefully we can partner and ask them, can we get a definitive answer after we go through it, yes or no? Because to do any work and then not have a definitive answer is, puts us back to square one, I think. And hopefully, they will partner with us. You know, they mentioned that they would like to partner with us, and so look forward to the opportunity.
Hear from the other members?
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah.
I would hope that the city would be willing to work with us on this. It would seem to me, though, that if you're going to approach the city once you find out their willingness to work with us on it, that you really need to get the township involved, the county, because this is, this, getting water and sewer out there is not just going to involve the city. It's going to involve rights away on county land. It's going to involve the town of Hudson. It would be short-sighted to just deal with the city only. I think for very quickly, once you've talked to the city the first time, you need to get the other municipalities involved to find out if they're all willing to work with us. I mean, for the county and the township, it could involve varying speed limits out there. If you put a school out there, it's going to affect their roads. There could be an issue with lights and sound at night in the town of Hudson. There's a lot of things to think about, and it's not just the city of Hudson that's involved. So I would suggest that we do it quickly. The other thing I would like to comment on is that we really need to find out once and for all if we can use UU for anything. The 650-student figure that you mentioned, that's a little variable. I know you mentioned that at the Facilities meeting, that that's a variable thing. We could hopefully find out from the DNR engineers or someone what the maximum students would be. Give us a maximum figure on that property without sewer and water. So that we would know, once we get all this studying done, whether we're to hang on to the land or get rid of it. I don't think that, I believe that the school district is not in the business of purchasing property and hanging on to it. We're not a landowner. If we're not going to use it, if it turns out that it truly is not usable for, if they won't do city water sewer, it's truly not usable for a 700-student school, then we need to talk about getting rid of it and doing something else. In that vein, I would like to ask, since we're putting UU back on the table, of course, we all thought it was not going to be usable for anything during the dog track program, but if it's, if we're going to look at UU, would we not be wise to go back to the county, where they offered us the 63 acres of land next to the government center? They offered to sell it to us. Would it not be wise for us, in, once we find out if the city's willing to work with us? If the city says, "Ah, you know, we don't know," that we go and try to find out from the county what they would want for that parcel that's next to the government center? There's really, if you think about it, if this district, if this school district has to build a building somewhere, there's not a whole lot of land in the city of Hudson to do that. And if you try to do it outside of the city in Hudson, I think you're going to have the same sewer and water issues just about anywhere you go.
Okay, thank you. Anything, Dan?
Well, I think a lot of the concerns and ideas that I would share have already been expressed. I certainly think that, as Sandy pointed out, there's a lot of different groups that we would need to partner with on that project. And, you know, before we get too far down the road with expenditures, it would be nice to know what the level of interest is with each of those groups.
Great. Okay, I appreciate your comments, and we'll take this back and probably then come back to you with, you know, some action, so. Then we'll move on then to topics for action. We have a number of them tonight, and we're going to hear from staff, particularly Nancy Sweet, on these first three or four. And then, if there's a citizen that wishes to speak in any one of those prior to us discussing and taking action, we'll take that, we'll take that as it comes, okay?
Okay.
So, first one.
Yes, there are three petitions from property owners to detach their property from one school district and attach it to the Hudson School District. I've included in the board material, there's some statutory material on the process for that petition. And I'll say just briefly that the process includes a certain timeline and consideration by the two affected school districts. It, the process includes an opportunity for the property owners to address the two boards of education, and that both districts must approve in order to detach a property and attach it to another district. The process includes thereafter, if one or both districts deny, the process includes the property owner's right to appeal to the Department of Public Instruction. The criteria, I want to focus on that, and I'm only going to go over this once because the criteria are the same for each of the petitions. The first criteria has to do with the geographical, topographical characteristics of the property and an estimated travel time to and from school for pupils in the school districts. We have guidelines associated with the amount of time that students can be transported one way, and it's approximately an hour. So keep that in mind. Criteria number two has to do with providing for the educational needs of the children in each of the school districts. And I would suggest that the New Richmond School District, the Somerset School District, and our Hudson School District are similar in their program offerings. And I won't be differentiating programs relative to the criteria. 2M is really a criteria that would have to be decided by the resident district, the district that the property owners are requesting to be removed from. That's not a criteria that we would be discussing. The third is what I suggested. You need to consider, if the property owners choose to speak tonight, you need to consider their input. The fourth is the fiscal effect, which is really the value of the property and the increase in the tax to the school district that might come from an attachment of the property. The fifth criteria has to do with whether or not the property is contiguous, whether or not it touches the school district of Hudson boundaries or not. And we'll look at maps to determine that. Number six, similar to programs offered, I would suggest that our socioeconomic levels and racial compositions are generally similar, and that we would not spend time differentiating that. Number seven is not applicable. It has to do with dissolving school districts, and that's not what we're into tonight. So that's process, that's criteria. And I'll move to the Nelson petition first in your agenda. Derek and Tracy Nelson, residents of the Somerset School District, have petitioned to have their property detached from the Somerset School District and attached to the Hudson School District. You can see the map on display. The address is 454 Highland View, Holton, Wisconsin. The white parts of the map represent the Somerset School District boundaries. Yellow is Hudson, and the Nelson property is shown in red, the lines. The Nelsens have two children now attending the Somerset School District. One child will be in grade seven next year, and the other child will be in grade nine next year. Bus travel one way to the Hudson Middle School is estimated at 30 minutes and 40 minutes to the Hudson High School, so within our 60-minute guidelines. The property would increase the district's tax base by approximately $340,000. The property is contiguous to the Hudson School District attendance boundaries. And I'll just remind you, if you look at that map, the property just above the Nelson property is the Myers property, which the board, that family petitioned last year for attachment to Hudson. You approved that, but not unanimously. And the Somerset School District denied it, and the Myers family appealed it, and DPI upheld it. So that property is attached to the Hudson School District. And the Nelson property is adjacent to the Myers property, so just a reminder of that. In the administration's review of the criteria, we would suggest that the petition meets criteria for school district reorganization and attachment of this property to the Hudson School District.
Okay, I'll ask then if there's any citizens that would request to speak regarding this, or this request.
They should have.
You could come forward and-
They need to complete the application to speak. Yeah?
And there's a, there's a, there's a form, I think, that needs to be- Okay.
Do, I don't know, do we need to?
No.
Just step up to the mic.
I might pass out.
And pull the mic, pull the mic up to you closely so that we can hear you clearly. And if you would, just give us your name and tell us where you live, as if we don't know, so.
I'm Tracy Nelson.
Okay, I'm Derek Nelson, husband.
And our kids, our daughter will be going to the high school next year, so we're looking at the different opportunities and that that Somerset offered versus Hudson. And I'm a Hudson graduate, so, '87, and so of course, I am for Hudson. And there's just a lot more opportunities, whether it's academic and extracurricular in Hudson. And then, we've had a few job changes also, where our time schedule, coming back from work a couple, two to three days a week, will be more towards 7:00 PM. And my sister's children go to Hudson, and my parents live in Hudson, so we have help in Hudson. You know, it'd be easier if they needed to get the kids, you know, instead of them being home for two to three hours alone. I don't know, so we would really like you to consider it.
I think partially tonight, too, you also made your own case yourself with just the recognition programs and, you know, the other programs- recognition programs and, you know, the other programs that you showed tonight. I mean, it's, it shows it's more of an aggressive forward program here, I think. And that's partly what we want for our kids, you know, to get the most opportunity they can.
Okay.
And that's what we see tonight here, just in a small window that we've seen.
Sure. Thank you. Thanks for expressing your thoughts on that. Now we'll just open it up to the board of their comments or questions or clarifications or even a motion if you want.
Mr. President?
Yeah.
I would be willing to make a motion that the board accept the Nelson petition to detach their property from Somerset School District and attach to the Hudson School District.
Okay, there's a motion by Mark. Is there a second?
A second.
Second by Pat. Any discussion?
Mr. Chairman?
Yep.
This having, this being my first sitting on this board when this question has come before the board, I'm going to have to speak against it. I, I have some problem with this in light of the condition that the Hudson schools are in right now with the overcrowding issues that we have in the upper grades. I don't think that we need to grow this district anymore. It's going to grow by itself. I, I think that residents who are not currently in the Hudson district, if they want to be in Hudson, there's always the option of selling the house, their house and moving to Hudson. They don't normally get to pick, residents do not normally get to pick which school district their property is going to be attached to. I think that this board is going to be setting up a terrible precedent by doing this. If you look at the map, there's all kinds of people around there that are in the Somerset schools. How are you ever going to say no to anybody who wants their property to be in Hudson? And it's already been attested to the fact that the DPI, you know, if there's an appeal, if you set up a standard where you're going to do this, which is what you did in the last year's vote, and then Somerset said no, you're going to end up dealing with appeals every time you say no, if you ever do say no. You're basically not going to be able to say no once you say yes. So I have a problem with it. I, I don't think we should accept any, any more people coming into the Hudson School District.
Okay.
Mr. President?
Lynn?
Nancy, I have a question for you or maybe somebody else at the table knows, but have we ever lost, previous to that appeal to the DPI for an attachment? I don't recall since I've been on the board, anybody ever appealing and having the DPI overrule a detaching district to come into Hudson?
Yeah, the only one that I remember that was an appeal, but the property owners prevailed, and that was a, a group of property owners who petitioned together and it was south and it was the River Falls School District. And River Falls, of course, said no. You know, they lose a tax base, they lose student aid. And we said yes, or the board at the time said yes, and they appealed and they prevailed and that those multiple properties are part of the Hudson School District. Last, last year, some of you objected similar to Sandy. You had the same concerns. The, on appeal, the DPI didn't recognize that as a criteria. It's a real concern, but it's not part of the criteria for this particular process.
Comment? Brian? So I'm just reading the criteria, the criteria two, Nancy, was the educational needs of all children resulting in the affected school districts. To me, isn't, to me that would, that would, you know, that would tell us that if a school was overcrowded, we would be affecting the needs of all students residing in the district. Isn't that correct? I mean, you could interpret it that way.
We could interpret it that way. We could.
But you did...
But I don't know if DPI would, would agree with us, but that would be...
And the middle school is over capacity right now.
That's the closest, that's the closest to your concerns.
Yeah, so I guess my question is, I'd like to get, maybe have the administration, if I could, Mr. President, is, I'm just concerned, my question would be, why would the administration say that their recommendation is to approve it when our middle school is overcrowded?
I don't think it was a recommendation by the administration. What they did was they indicated from their opinion is that it meets the criteria. It's not a recommendation.
But how's it meet the criteria if, if the middle school's overcrowded?
The administration can speak to that, but it's not a recommendation, Brian.
Yeah, right. It, the, in our experience with the criteria, number two has not been interpreted the way that you're suggesting, but if we were to, if there were to be an appeal and we, as a district, were to present ourselves and argue at DPI, that would probably be as good as any. It may or may not be received.
But we have, but do we have any precedence that, because last time we approved it, right? But if the board would not approve it based off of, it doesn't meet criteria two, that the educational needs of all the students are actually deteriorating, deteriorated because of this decision? We don't have any precedence that it would be overruled, do we?
Right. Well, what, what we have is when, when an appeal is filed, the DPI does collect, they collect the minutes, they collect the audio tape of the meeting. So they certainly did hear the arguments at the time. Several of you said were concerned about over enrollment and concerned about the impact on the program and the numbers. They didn't...
But the board approved it though, right?
The board approved it, but Somerset denied it.
Mr. Chairman?
Mm-hmm.
I think, I'm sorry, I thought we were done.
So, so basically on that, I would, I would not be supporting this. And by the way, I appreciate the Nelsens being here and all their comments, so this is, it's nothing to do with their petition or their request. It just has to do with the quality of our middle school. I'm just concerned any more students in the middle school right now. Good.
Mr. Chairman? I believe the two appeal episodes that Nancy was talking about were, as Brian stated, both times this board approved it and the giving up district disapproved it. So when the DPI, when there's an appeal and the DPI looks at that, you've got one board saying yes, this board says we'll take them, the giving up board says we don't want you to go, the DPI steps in. The point I think Brian was trying to make, and I will make again, is if this board says no and Somerset says no, there may be an appeal. But if you've got both boards saying no, it's unlikely the DPI is going to approve an appeal with both boards saying no.
Okay, Pat? I'm sorry.
Okay, I'm looking at the map and it's yellow all around. They have to come through our district to get in there, the roads. I, if we, if we say no, which I can see why, because we, we are overcrowded in both the high school and the middle school. As a citizen, I think they have a right to point out that they're in our district but being carved out and they have a right to be in our district. That's, you know, it doesn't matter how good our schoolers or how bad it is or whatever. They can go to the DPI if we say no. And they have, you go down these other criterias, they, I think, have a case, but I think they have a strong case.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman?
Mark?
If I may, I think in some respect, and I appreciate your position, both Brian and Sandy, but I think in some cases we're intertwining our enrollment issues with this petition a little too closely. Rejecting the Nelson family petition does not solve our enrollment crisis. And, and you never reject expanding the tax base. To me, that's, that's really a given. This comes, this attaches to Hudson property, we have that, that tax base, that aid going forward. We have an enrollment problem that is, that we'll be addressing hopefully. It may take a while to get that concluded and I may not be sitting here, but that, that's really, is to me a separate thing. This, this doesn't, this shouldn't be hinging on this. This is an expansion of the tax base and I think just really barring overwhelming evidence to the contrary, I think you expand the tax base.
Okay. Sandy?
Well, I'd like to address Pat's comment that they're already in our district. If you look at the map, everything white is Somerset. There's a whole bunch of Somerset people in that area, Somerset district residents in that area. So they're not already in our district. As far as what Mark said, that you don't want to, you don't want to turn this down because of overcrowding. I think overcrowding is, is a main reason to try to limit what we're allowing to happen in our district. Every time we allow one or two more students in, when we don't have room for them, it creates a bigger problem and it causes problems for the students that are currently in the district, in the middle school, in the high school. So I am going to have to vote no on this when the vote comes. I'm, I'm very much opposed to allowing other newer people in, I'm opposed to this district gobbling up other people from other districts.
Could I make one further point?
Sure.
Just, just as a reminder, too, is that this property will become permanently attached to Hudson School District. And at such time, when the Nelson family no longer has children in our district, that property will still be ours, as will those tax dollars. So think long-term.
I would like to correct that, what I meant to say is that they have to drive in our district to get to them. Look at it. It is all yellow. They have to drive there. We have buses that go across there. The bus, it doesn't take, what, two minutes to go pick them up? So they have a case against us.
Okay. Anybody else, any other comments, points you want to make?
I would just make one other comment. The roads going to that Highland View subdivision, yes, they do go through our district. Roads go through our district to get just about any place they have to go. If you're going to New Richmond, you have to drive through the Hudson School District to get there. If you're going to Somerset, you have to drive through the Hudson School District to get there. So the fact that that road goes through Hudson School District before it hits all that white area, that's all Somerset, that doesn't really, it's not, doesn't have much validity.
Okay.
Mr. President, I mean that the Somerset school buses have to drive through Hudson District to get to their Somerset. I have no idea how that got into the Somerset in the first place. It's interesting. And how did we get around it?
I think we've got, I think we've got both of your points, so thanks.
Thank you.
So we have a motion and a second.
Roll call vote.
I was waiting for that, so we'll start with Pat. Roll call vote.
German, yes.
Kaiser shot, aye.
Turner, no.
Robson, no.
Holland... Pardon?
I'm sorry, Tom.
Holland, aye.
Gerke, no.
Bell, no. Motion fails and so the petition fails. So we'll be moving on, you have options to, to go to the, the next district and appeal and so forth, so. All right, we'll hear the next one.
Okay. The next property, the Douglas property, Ryan and Teresa Douglas, residents of the Somerset School District have petitioned to have their property detached from the Somerset School District and attached to the Hudson School District. The display map, the address is 632 Perch Lake Road and with Hudson, Wisconsin. The white again is Somerset School District, the yellow is Hudson. And the Douglas property is shown in red, the circle and the X over toward the right. There are other Somerset School District properties located along Perch Lake Road to the south, east and west of the Douglas property. They don't show on the map, but there are other Somerset School District properties to the south, the east and the west of the Douglas property. The Douglas's have two children, one currently in fourth grade, fifth grade next year, and the other currently in second grade, third grade next year, both attending St. Patrick's School in Hudson. Bus travel one way to Holton is approximately 17 minutes, 35 minutes to Hudson Middle School and 45 minutes to Hudson High School. All of those travel times are within our guidelines. The property would increase the district tax base by approximately $349,000. Although very close, the property is not contiguous to the Hudson School District attendance boundaries. The petition does not meet criteria for school district reorganization.
Okay, we'll follow the same procedure. Are there others in the, in the audience that would like to speak to this? Welcome to come forward and if you could give us your name and place of residence.
I'm Teresa Douglas, this is my husband, Ryan Douglas.
I'm Ryan Douglas.
Go ahead. And we appreciate you considering our, our petition. I would say the only difference between our circumstances and the Nelson's is that our children do attend St. Patrick's School and we have every intention of them remaining there through eighth grade. We won't be overcrowding your middle school. We would like very much for them to be able to attend Hudson High School. Although I think Nancy Sweet's comments about the, the school districts being comparable are very generous, I, I, I see a great school district here with great leadership. And our oldest son, we actually have three children, our youngest isn't in school yet, our oldest son is in fourth grade, we wouldn't be using your school district for another four or five years. And we'd love for you to take our tax dollars in the meantime and make good use of them. And our, we're members of the Hudson community. We attend church here, our children attend school here, they go, they participate in their activities here. My husband works in St. Paul. Our lives are focused in this direction. We have no intention of our children attending Somerset High School, so that's...
Or using the bus for that matter.
Yeah, or using the buses, which, the Hudson buses, which do drive by the end of our driveway. So thank you for considering our petition. Do you have anything to add?
All that'll do.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks. Okay, again, we'll open it up to the board, comments, even motions.
I guess I'll start.
Okay, Mark?
If I may, Tom? I guess I can make essentially the same, what it looks like.
I apologize.
Sure.
Just one more comment, if I may. I appreciate Sandy's comments very much about setting a precedent. I would wonder if by gobbling up properties from neighboring districts, as you commented, may instill some competition that could actually bolster those surrounding school districts. If this does in fact become a pattern, could it possibly motivate those districts to improve in some way? So, thank you.
Thanks. Mark?
I guess for the most part, I'll reiterate my same argument. I didn't realize I'm an empire builder here, but I, I do think you really expand the tax base when you're able. Just to touch on the enrollment thing, and I, I get it, we're full, we're, we're trying to find space for our schools. Had we not planned to address that problem, I probably would agree with you. If we had this finite space and everything was going to be stressing our system, I hope like hell that's not the case. I hope we have a plan in place for expansion of this school district. I hope it's going to be a new secondary school. But I, I think that's the plan. I'll be greatly disappointed if that doesn't take place. So on that assumption, and I think it's a valid one, we will have the capacity to expand the district and to take these folks in the Hudson School District. I do think it's short-sighted to reject this. This is an expansion of the tax base. I, I'm not an expert economist, but I will bet that you will find validity in doing that long-term.
Okay.
And so therefore, I will support the attachment of this property as well.
I'll just point out that this, this one does not meet the criteria, all the criteria, just to make sure.
I know, no, I do understand that, yes.
Mr. Chairman, that, that would be my comment also, that this one absolutely doesn't meet the criteria of, of the laid, of the rules as they are laid out. I, I see really no reason to discuss this one, it doesn't meet the criteria.
I think there's reason to discuss it. I think we just, we'll make sure we go through this protocol. Brian? Mr. President, I have a question. If, if we, if we don't pass a petition, can someone repetition in subsequent years?
Well, I didn't see anything in my reading of the process that would prohibit it. I'm not sure, though. I didn't see anything that would prohibit it, but, and we, I don't recall having had repeated petitions either.
Mr. President?
Yeah.
Are you saying you would feel differently if we didn't have secondary space problems, that you would...
The non-continuous is a little bit of an issue, right? But in general, I think my previous comments are really based off of, I'm being a little bit myopic in terms of our current, current space needs. But I'd probably act differently if we had space. I would like to increase the, the tax base, right? But also I, we have a short, a pretty significant short-term issue here, so. Pat?
Okay, they're talking about not coming into our district, or the kids into the school for four years. Will, I hope we'll be able to address our secondary school needs within those four years. So anyway, I just, I'm just looking at that, if, if that is, if that's a criteria for somebody. I hope that's done in four years.
Mr. Chairman?
I think based on your question and Nancy, Nancy's response, there is the opportunity to reapply, I believe, for a petition. Is that correct? Is that correct, Nancy?
There would appear to be. I don't see anything that would prohibit it. So, I'm not the last word on that, but I didn't see anything that would prohibit, um, multiple petitions.
Okay. Sandy?
Yes. Um, the, the fact that this is non-contiguous should, should be the deciding factor in this one, but I would reiterate again, uh, setting the precedent of taking these, these, uh, parcels into our school district. It would even be worse if we agreed to take something that doesn't meet the criteria. If you're trying to not set the precedent or establish any future problems. Setting, taking something that does not meet the criteria would really open the door for us having to take anything and anybody anywhere.
Okay.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion. I'd like to deny, I'd make a motion to deny the petition of the Douglas's from the Somerset School District and attached to the Hudson School District.
There's a motion to deny by Lynn, is her second?
My second.
I'll take Dan as a second. Uh, any other further discussion? Okay, so now we are voting.
Roll call.
We are voting to, uh, voting on the motion, which is to deny. Sandy. So, uh, start with Pat.
German, no.
Kaiser shot, no.
Ternohoy, aye.
Robson, aye.
Holland, aye.
Gerke, aye.
Bell, aye.
Okay. Motion passes and the petition is denied. Uh, third one, the Leeson petition.
Yes. Terry and Kirk Leeson, residents of the New Richmond School District, have petitioned to have their property detached from the New Richmond School District and attached to the Hudson School District. Uh, the map that's on display, the address is eight twenty-one thirty-second Avenue Hudson. White shows the New Richmond, uh, School District, uh, territory. Yellow is Hudson. And, uh, the red circle with the X through it would be the location of the Leeson property. The white box that you see extending down into the yellow Hudson territory is a lake. Prime, it's, it's pretty much a lake, okay? The land south of one thirty-second, south of one thirty-second, east of the Leeson property is currently undeveloped and east. So, if you look south of the Leeson property, south of one thirty-second, that's undeveloped area as far as we can tell. And then immediately to the east, again, within the New Richmond, uh, School District, but it, it appears to be undeveloped. The, there are many home sites north, though, of one thirty-second within the development where the Leeson property is located. Those, uh, home sites do not show on the map, but there are multiple home sites within the, that particular development. The Leesons have two children attending Holton Elementary School under open enrollment. One child is in fifth grade, going into sixth grade next year. The other child is in fourth grade, going into fifth grade next year. Bus travel one way to Holton is about forty minutes, twenty, twenty minutes to Hudson Middle School, and thirty minutes to Hudson High School. Again, all within our bus travel guidelines. The property would increase the district's tax base by approximately two hundred and sixty-five thousand. Although it's very close, the property is not contiguous to the Hudson School District attendance boundaries, and the petition does not meet the criteria for school district reorganization.
Okay. And I believe we have Mr. Leeson.
Aye.
Yeah?
I'm Kirk Leeson. I can confirm that the south and east is all undeveloped. It's just farm. Uh, that is, or used to be a lake. It's dried up here recently. Um, both of my kids do go to Holton and have had a wonderful experience there. That's why we would like to continue their experience in the Hudson School District. Um, I am a Hudson School District alumni as well. The bus actually turns around right at the T just to the west of our.
That's correct.
House there. And they come in and pull kind of down in there and do some backing up and all sorts of, uh, goofing around. But they get, get it turned around in there. And everything south is all, all Hudson. We are about, it's actually only about ten minutes to Holton. Um, it's actually pretty, pretty short. And I would say probably fifteen, twenty to the high school, uh, somewhere around in there. We have talked to the principals at New Richmond and in Hudson, at the middle schools. And, um, I'm happy to say it, it actually seems like we are a little bit in a win-win situation. I do think Hudson is better, but we also feel good about New Richmond. I think, uh, we are lucky in that sense. So, thank you for considering.
Great. Thank you. Uh, comments or discussion on this? Dan?
Mr. President, um, I don't know if this is a question for you or Mary or Nancy, but where are we currently in terms of our capacity at the middle school? How many over capacity are we? Just a ballpark is fine.
Well, I know, um, the capacity is eleven twenty-five.
Okay.
And we are at thirteen hundred plus. I just don't know exact, the exact number.
So, so in a situation like this where we have a couple of students that are poised to go into our middle school situation, I can't help but think of, you know, our staff that are at the middle school. And we're basically asking our staff, you know, hey, I know you're sort of filled with your classrooms, but can you take one more student? And not only can you take one more student, but one more student that's not in our district. So, I, I guess I would just ask our board members as, as we're, you know, debating this. You know, I, I do think it's, it, given the situation where we're at, we don't have, yes, we're looking at a solution for our secondary problem, but we're not there yet. So, I think we have to, um, be mindful, not only of this as, as a petitioner's request, but, um, the additional burden or, um, what, the additional requests that we're asking our, our teaching staff and the school facility, facility as well as the capacity of that facility, and does it make sense? And I, even those, these petitions are very heartfelt. It's not easy to say no, but I really think we're in a situation right now where we just can't accept any more students under these circumstances.
Could I?
Okay, yeah, Mr. Leeson, I'm going to allow you to do that.
That actually is.
Then we're not going to have any more.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, we're not going to have any more give and take, but I want to allow you the, the opportunity.
Yeah, I mentioned Mr. Ternohoy. I, we act, that was one of the things that we talked about with the, the middle school president. And while it is, of course, possible that, that she was being polite, that was not a concern that, that she had. Uh, she felt that, that, uh, the students could come in and, and enjoy a, a really good educational experience. Again, um, that may be something that she just said, uh, but it certainly didn't, didn't come across that way. She was very welcoming and, and confident that they could present, uh, to the kids a, a good, a very good experience.
Thank you. Thank you. And is there anything else that you want to say?
No, I'm sorry. I, I actually walked back over there, but then when Mr. Ternohoy said that, I wanted to mention that we, we did talk about that and think about that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Comments? Mark?
Mr. President, I guess I'll, I'll continue the theme of the great Kaiser shot land grab here. Naturally, I support disposition, uh, acquisition here. You know, I, I think, uh, I'm just going to come back again to enrollment issue. We're, you know, we're not going to address a major enrollment problem by plugging a few of these holes. The Nelson, Douglas, Leeson family, denying their petition does not, does not solve a large fundamental problem. And, and to me, I guess what this points out, and I, 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 and one respect, I'm glad to see so many fellow board members so concerned about enrollment issues. Because I hope that means there's a lot of energy going forward to address it quickly, sooner rather than later. I don't want to rehash the dog tech, direct thing, but that's probably going to be one of the greatest disappointments in my service on the board, that we weren't able to close that deal and move forward. Because we do need to do it, and we do need to do it rapidly. This is, you know, a, a couple of kids here, a couple of kids there. We have big enrollment issues. And so, please keep our eyes on that ball. That is important. But expansion of the tax base is a good thing, and we should attach. Continue, yes or not? I, I, I don't care about the criteria. If, if we can get some more, uh, uh, expanded tax base, I'm willing to do it. It's a good thing, long-term. I understand your concerns, short-term. I, I don't disagree with them. But what I do disagree is that, that a couple of kids here and there solves our problem. It doesn't solve our problem. Open enrollment is, does, you know, again, that, that comes out to be pretty close to almost a balance, isn't it, sometimes, Ms. Sweet? Between the students leaving and coming in? The numbers are not, are not great.
More going out than coming in.
More going out, okay. I, I digress, but anyway, that, the point is, this is, we're, we're, you know, fiddling around the fringes. It, it doesn't address the problem.
May I ask a question of? Okay, you've got a little line of yellow going up there. Is there a home that lives, is there a house up in that little, uh, jot there, Nancy?
I don't know.
You don't know if that's a home?
This is drawn from a, a map. I don't know. We didn't, I didn't go out there to look to see if there was an actual house there, but any, any area that would be yellow, if it's not developed, it, I suppose, could be, unless there were some issues. Don't know.
If there's a home there and it's coming here, it's interesting, I guess.
Mr. President, move to, uh, disapprove this petition. Okay, there's a, uh, motion by Brian to, uh, deny the petition is their second?
Second.
Second by Sandy. Any other discussion?
Mr. President, just want to add some information because, um, some people in our community get confused about open enrollment and think our numbers are very large in relationship, and it's always good for us to clarify that. So, open enrollment into the district in January was thirty. Open enrollment out of the district was forty-seven. So, certainly much higher on the outside.
And, and still we remain over capacity in, in, uh, most of the schools, except for the grade schools that are, so.
And of those thirty, they all didn't ultimately attend.
Mr. Chairman, there is a motion on the table, and it's been seconded, and it wasn't about open enrollment, so I think we probably need to vote before any more discussion about open enrollment.
Well, uh, is there any other discussion regarding the motion? No? Okay. Uh, all in favor?
Roll call vote, please.
It's been requested by Sandy for a roll call vote, Diane. So, we'll start with Pat. So, we're voting, uh, on the motion, which is to deny the petition.
We have pass on this?
You're passing?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Uh, Kaiser shot, no.
Robson, aye.
Holland, aye.
Gerke, aye.
Bell, aye.
The motion carries and the petition is. Turn the mic on.
Ternohoy, aye.
And aye passed.
Abstained.
Abstaining.
Okay. So, um, the motion passes and the petition is denied. Moving on to, uh, proposed revision of school calendar, Nancy.
Okay. Um, last, uh, in November of twenty-eleven, you did approve the school calendar for twenty thirteen, fourteen, and we have a revision, um, before you for approval. The differences are that this particular calendar now specifically identifies when the parent-teacher conferences will be held. October sixteenth, um, evening, middle and high school only. And October seventeenth evening, parent-teacher conferences, elementary only. Uh, also, the change that we're proposing in next year's calendar, previously approved, is we moved the early release from Monday the seventeenth to February twentieth to provide for more time for parent-teacher conference and flexibility for a combination of, uh, the parent-teacher conferences and professional development, rather than in the same week having those, uh, times off. Those are the only changes. And you, I, did you want me to go through all of them and you may take one action?
Uh, we're going to take this, uh.
There's two more years that we're asking you to approve.
Yeah, sorry.
Okay. Okay. Then moving on to twenty fourteen, fifteen, um, looks, it's patterned after twenty thirteen, fourteen. Uh, school starts about the same time and ends about the same time. The difference you'll see is the spring break cycles back to the first week of March instead of the third. That's been a practice for as long as I've been here, and it has to do with the athletic, um, conferences and, uh, just kind of switching that off relative to faculty and, uh, parents and students. And then we move to the twenty fifteen, sixteen. Again, patterned similarly, but you'll see that, um, Labor Day is later. And the state law does not allow us to start prior to Labor Day. So, that means that we start later, and then you'll see that, um, school goes into the third week of June for this particular calendar. And then the spring break is back to the third full week of March. Those are the only differences. And so, the administration would ask you to approve the revision for, to next year's calendar and then to adopt the, uh, twenty fourteen, fifteen, and the twenty fifteen, sixteen.
Okay. So, we'll entertain a motion for all three of those years.
I, I have a question.
Yep.
I don't know if Nancy or Mary. I am interested in the spring break swing, uh, uh, on the cycle. Because I know that, uh, um, sometimes, uh, you know, athletics, when the, when it's later in March, that students are actually starting practice and, and tryouts when it's the third week in March, when families are trying to go on spring break trips. Is there, is there, I'm, I'm trying to understand the, the late spring breaks. It seems to be a negative impact on some families.
Well, Nancy, as I understand it, it's about the state tournaments.
Yeah.
And when they're scheduled for different sports. And so, if it was on the same week every year, there would be one, a certain sport, and maybe more than one.
Or sports, yeah.
That, um, is always affected by spring break. And so, as a result, the district has had a practice of switching that off so it doesn't always affect the same sports, as we understand.
Yeah. That's my understanding as well.
Yeah. Good question.
Yep.
So, if we, if it stayed the first week in March, some students, that would always be affecting.
Yes. Yes. And, and, and one, one thing that, um, uh, the, the school district used to just adopt the calendar, um, just annually. When we started a few years ago to offer a couple of years at a time for adoption, uh, we've heard, we've had very good parent feedback. Parents just want to know what, when spring break is. They just want, ahead of time. And in this instance, they're going to know three years ahead, next year, the year after, and the year after that. It really allows for better planning, uh, for parents and, and also our faculty.
Okay. Lynn?
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to approve the calendars as presented.
Okay, there's, there's a motion from Lynn to approve the calendars as presented, and a second by Dan. Any other discussion? Okay, hearing none. All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Moving on then to learning services and student services reorganization. Sandy Kovac, Corey McIntyre, and Dave Granbo.
Good evening. I'd like to start with a story this evening. I checked in with my colleagues this afternoon to see if it was okay to share. But about four years ago, we were interviewing for a new student services director. And one of the questions dealt with, how are you going to connect with the other departments in the system? And I remember, we were interviewing Corey, and he kind of looked my direction, and he said, "Well, curriculum and student services should be connected at the hip." And I was kind of like, wow. This guy thinks differently. I'm used to having curriculum and student services, never should they meet. And that was the start of our collaborative work together. And that was the start of our collaborative work together, to really break down the silos of our two departments, and really focus on all kids. And so, tonight is kind of talking about those four years, our progress, and presenting to you tonight a proposal of making it a formal joint effort on all kids.
Well, and I can add to that. It's been a work in progress, and we really just want to realize that goal of integrated service delivery, and really improving our service to all the buildings, and our support to the staff, our students, and families. You've seen many presentations recently on new initiatives, new work coming our way. Continually, we're working more and more closely together, because it really requires us to work in that format, to continue to improve our system. And we believe this proposal will increase a common focus, and integrate, and take our work to the next level. So, with that, I'll let Dave kind of take the next section here.
Which one?
Sandy. We didn't even know who was on first.
That's how well-integrated we are.
You'll notice on this one, we are gonna adjust slightly and kind of combine to create a new title for our department, Learning Support Services. The important work of our district takes place in the schools. Our role really is to support the schools, to serve the schools, and hence the name Learning Support Services. As you know very well over the past few years, learning is always our focus, everything we do. And so, we think that encompasses the core of our work. We've tossed around different titles and decided we didn't need to make a lot of change. A lot of our stakeholders, both internally and externally, know these current titles for Cory and I, so I'll remain Learning Services Director, Cory Student Services Director. But we did adjust Dave in order to represent a lot of what he does with the system and the SMART goals, and the work with the principals. And so, System Improvement Director is what we're recommending for that title. We then created a vision for our department, and you can read it there. I'll just summarize some of the high points. But again, we're looking for more collaboration that's really focused on serving our schools. We want to provide quality, responsive service, and we also want to make sure that we're working tightly with our school staff, and bringing together, in order to leverage those initiatives, and providing opportunities for all students and our staff to perform at high levels.
All right, I'll walk you through the visual that is represented at the bottom of the page there. And the story of this visual actually starts last August at our administrative leadership team retreat that we have, and that's something we have every year. It's a couple of days where all the administrators in the district, we convene to kind of kick off the year and spend some time talking about our vision and our goals for the year. And this year was a unique experience in that, as Cory mentioned earlier, there are several initiatives that were coming down the pike. Some were led from state initiatives, other from national initiatives, and then some focus that we wanted to bring to that in our own work. And those areas are represented actually in the middle of that, of that graphic, but I'm gonna talk a little bit about the evolution of our work with that. Originally, we were looking at the initiatives and the mandates, and when we use the term mandate, it sounds, you know, it's something we need to do, but we realized that if we wanted to leverage those mandates or initiatives for success for all students, we needed to take a broader approach. And one of the things that we realized during this process was that the focus needed to be on our HSD 2025 strategic vision. The statement at the top there, just above the graphic, collaboratively implementing teaching, learning, and assessment that result in students taking charge of their own learning and creating new solutions to real-world challenges. That's a statement that has evolved, and actually was born there during that alt-retreat, when we were trying to come up with a statement that helped pull all of the elements of HSD 2025 together. And we landed on a statement that was close to that, but with the input of many groups, some teacher leadership groups, and different opportunities for us to meet administratively. This is where we've landed right now, and we're operating with that as our working mission for HSD 2025. And the graphic below then, you'll notice that there's the large arrow on the left there, and that's the strategic vision that's driving everything forward. What we did here was realize that the strategic vision needed to be looked at in two ways. One was the driving force, and that lens that we make all our decisions through, but the other was the outcome side of that. So, we start with the vision on the left, and then you'll see that it points directly to Hudson Students. And around the Hudson Students, you'll see the HSD Schools, and then Learning Support Services are a new acronym for everyone, LSS. And with that idea that we're constantly supporting our students. And then, the next part of that graphic is the one that requires a little bit of explanation. You'll see the circle separated into quadrants with some arrows that indicate that all of those different areas are interconnected. And originally, this was realized in the form of the initiatives. And we were looking at things like Common Core State Standards, which is the, which will be the standards that we'll be operating under for student learning. High-performing staff, we were really looking at that in terms of educator effectiveness, which is a very specific and structured initiative. And we're looking at response to intervention, which again, is a structure that's very important but limited in its scope. And then finally, the smarter balanced assessment, which will replace our WKCE assessment that we've talked about, and actually was the assessment that Dolph had mentioned earlier, where much of the evidence that, that supported their award came from. But we had to take a step back and realize that those initiatives are important, but it's more important to get to the heart of what they're all about. And we came up with these four ideas. Twenty-first century standards, which is more encompassing than just Common Core, and recognizes the standards that all of our students and all of our teachers will be using, including our content area teachers, special educators, and specialists. And the idea of high-performing staff, it's much broader than the concept of educator effective, educator effectiveness and teacher evaluation. It includes concepts such as professional learning, professional development, and support for teachers in their professional learning communities. And then, we have the instruction, intervention, and innovation. Response to intervention, as it's recognized in the state and throughout the nation, really is a structure that helps us make decisions, and it's an important guiding structure. But a structure in and of itself doesn't have the power to move toward HSD 2025. We need to take that structure and allow it to, for us all to innovate, our teachers to innovate, our students to innovate, and that's what's represented there. And then finally, the concept of assessment is much broader than a state accountability assessment. It deals with assessment across all spectrums, from our formative assessment, that helps teachers make choices to meet the needs of their students, and the assessments that we implement throughout the system. And then finally, all aiming toward our graduate learner outcomes, the portion, the outcome portion of HSD 2025, and then a more general statement of improved student performance in all areas. If you take a look at the next page, we'll talk a little bit about sort of an organizational chart or responsibility chart here, and I want to just cover a few things as we worked on this. We took some time to discuss, is this an opportunity to change our roles and responsibilities and do things differently? And what we realized was, we all bring a certain level of expertise to the table, and our goal ended up really being about how do we merge them together versus switching out some responsibilities and relearning new things, which make us take a step back. So, we, in essence, maintained most of the responsibilities. There was some shifting to move some things under Dave's responsibility list, so to speak, and to try to add some focus to those items. And as Sandy said earlier, we considered changing titles, but we felt, with feedback from our administrative team and others, that people still need a sense of who do I go to when I need assistance, and we felt like leaving those in place would help bring a sense of stability. Dave just went through that graphic, and what you'll see in this chart is the four items that were in that graphic, the high-performing staff, twenty-first century standards, RTI, cubed, and quality assessment. We all have a role in those items, and that is a big shift from the work in the past, working more collaboratively on those items. We've talked about these columns really having arrows that would probably go across and around, because we will be involved with each other. Although one person will have the lead responsibility, we will have a more stronger connection in supporting these groups of staff and departments. So, in the end, we believe this brings the whole, all of our expertise to some of the parts are stronger, or the whole is stronger than individual silos that Sandy mentioned earlier.
To the next slide, please. So, what will be different? And these are four areas that we came down on. One would be visionary, leading the long-range innovative implementation of HSD 2025. We had some initial plans roll out, you might recall, with especially rolling out the global literacy and the environmental sustainability of GLOs. And then, with all the other pieces, and also the recognition as we kept working together, it was like we can't roll that out with some of the other initiatives. So, some of our vision now is coming up with a long-term plan of how all those initiatives roll out together, so that our staff can see how that, how that will be in the coming years. And then focused, and you can see the word strategically balancing school and district initiatives. Again, we have things that we are responsible for at the district level. We have schools also that are trying to be innovative. And again, how do we ensure that we're supporting each other and making sure that our plans align? Then, collaboration or collaborative, customizing those services and eliminating barriers, again, to meet the needs of stakeholders while strengthening the system. We've already started some of that process this year, following the report cards that were released. We are now making an effort to go out to each of the buildings and talk to principals individually. We've done a lot where we've done K-12 meetings, principal meetings, where we sat them in a group and have some discussions, but we're doing one-on-ones, talking about their specific report card, their data, anything else that they need, so we can take all that back again and make sure that we're supporting them as best we can. Unique, the uniqueness of each of our buildings. And then finally, the comprehensive nature of looking at multiple perspectives. We truly feel that we bring strength, it's kind of the old adage, you know, in this case, three heads are better than two, or three heads are better than one, but we each bring our own talents to the table, and so those multiple perspectives along with our school sites can build even a stronger system. So, we're very excited about what we're going to be accomplishing.
And finally, we'll share some of the specifics, as far as work that we plan to do, or actually in some ways already are doing differently. If, and I won't read through all of them, but I thought it would highlight a few of the ideas that are contained around that graphic to help you understand some of the jobs that we will intentionally approach differently. If we look at the twenty-first century standards, the one that I thought is worth pointing out is high school learning for the future. We had Dana and Laura and Hank present earlier on the flip it forward, and that's just one small piece of the many important initiatives that are taking place at Hudson High School. And in many ways, high school learning for the future is the embodiment of HSD 2025. That's where all the work leads up to the support that starts in the elementary schools, extends into the middle school, and finally culminates at the high school. It's very powerful, and it's something that we realize requires a great deal of support. And that support, then, we want to be able to offer comprehensively, and make sure that we're not just band-aiding issues and, and supporting from outside. We really want to be embedded and offer direct support. Moving to the right, if we look at high-performing staff, I'm gonna highlight one that we've talked about previously, and will continue to be talking about, because it's a major shift, and that would be our teacher evaluation or educator effectiveness framework. This is something that we are working very hard to make sure that we put together a fair, reliable, and valid system, and in doing that, it needs multiple perspectives, and we'll offer that as we move forward. Going down in the lower right-hand corner in that quality assessment, some of the work we've already mentioned with the smarter balanced assessment, as we transition much of what has been measured under WKCE into smarter balance, it's gonna require a lot of coordination, a lot of leadership, and a lot of support for our schools, so we can maximize the results. Being involved in a large-scale assessment and not capitalizing on the data that we receive is really a missed opportunity. We want to make sure that we can, again, process that from multiple perspectives and offer support that helps all of our students learn at higher levels. And that's directly reflected, then, if we move to the left and look under the instruction, intervention, and innovation, I'll focus on the concept of closing the achievement gap. And the idea there is that we are a high-achieving district, and we have a lot of evidence that supports that, but at the same time, not all of our students are learning at the levels and achieving at the levels that we need them to, to be successful. And that focus on closing the achievement gap, that takes place in that idea of instruction, intervention, and innovation, but we need to all be together. Very often, in a more traditional setting, closing the gap actually would be moved over to Cory's department, because it'd be focusing on very specific groups of students, but we need to be looking at that from the lens of all of our students. So, just some examples of some specific initiatives and jobs that will be done differently in the future. So, kind of in closure, a few key concepts we discussed that we wanted to leave with you as we were reviewing this and kind of challenging it and poking holes in it and those kinds of things, we talked about, well, is this just cosmetic? Is this just, looks good on paper? What's different? And you've heard over the last few years how we are expecting our staff to do their work differently. We're expecting our staff to work more collaboratively, and we thought, what better way to model that by leading by example, and demonstrating to them how we're doing our work differently, and doing what we're asking of them ourselves? And we felt very strongly about that, and we're very excited about doing, we're already doing it, and we can't wait till next year. We just felt very strongly that we need to continue to limit those silos and actually model by example, lead by example with our staff, and how work, the work ahead of us has to get done in a different way than we've done it in the past. So, I believe with that, unless you guys want to add any closing comments, we'll kind of open it up for any questions or feedback you have.
Well, I want to make a couple of comments first.
Yes.
As part of this. Surprise, surprise, yes. So, each of the three leaders that you see before you is a highly contributing leader in their own right to our system for learning, and for the support and the work that goes on in our schools and our classrooms each day. But what's been evident in their work together just to strengthen the model that they had already started working toward, was we all have witnessed an unleashing of what I would call their passion and their vision, strengthening it together. So, they're thinking differently. They're thinking about each student and the students that are most at promise, and how do we help support those students, just like Dolph talked about a few times ago, our gifted and talented students, our students in the middle, each and every one of our students. And the skills that they bring to the table, and the talent they bring, help strengthen us as an organization, and help strengthen the work in the schools. So, I'm very excited about seeing this new model. We don't know where this model is anyplace else, but this new model working forward. And the goal is to be stronger and to provide services at a higher level to our schools and our principals and our teachers to support each student learning at higher levels. So, we recommend, we jointly recommend this to you for your approval.
I'll just make a comment that I, we're very fortunate, I believe, to have three individuals that are very specifically skilled in the areas that they're in. Sandy in curriculum, and Dave in systems, and Cory in special, special populations. And so, I think this makes complete sense to me, just absolutely. I can't imagine why it wasn't done before, but, but just another example of, I think, this district thinking forward. And so, those are my comments. I'll open it up to questions or comments from the board. Our motion.
Move to approve.
Okay, so, motion to approve this restructure, or reorganization, I should say. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Sandy.
Everybody jump.
Okay. Any other discussion, any further discussion?
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah.
I would just like to say that, I was on the personnel committee, of course, this was presented to us. This is very innovative. You guys are to be commended for coming up with something like this. I think it's gonna be a great asset to the Hudson School District, to have this set up and the three of you working together as it's laid out here. So, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, any other just comments? Okay, hearing none, then we'll vote, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you, congratulations, good work, and we'll move on to the next one, which is related. Who's doing this? Mary?
I am. So, I would recommend, as part of this restructuring process, to offer a contract to David Grambo as System Improvement Director. You have a job description attached to the information that you have, and certainly, this is a credit to him and the work that he has done as Learning Services Associate Director, and the high level of contribution that he's made so far to the district. And he continues to expand in that role, and we see this as a natural progression that will be very beneficial to the rest of the district. So, we would be happy to answer any questions, but certainly, this... So we would be happy to answer any questions, but certainly this is an extension of what you just approved.
Any questions or comments or motion?
I move to accept this contract and issue it to Mr. Grambo. Second.
Okay, motion by Sandy and second by Lynn. Any discussion? Okay, hearing none. All in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Thank you again. Okay, moving on then. Principal, associate principals, coordinators, and supervisors, contract renewals. Nancy?
Yes. These contract renewals were considered and unanimously approved for full board action by both the finance and personnel committees. The changes in the contracts are either of no additional cost or of minor cost to the district. And if you were to act to approve these contract renewals, they do not include acting on the salary for the positions. It's purely the contract and the benefits of the contract minus the salary, which you did, you approved an increase this year in January, and you would have a separate opportunity later to consider increase in salary next year. So it is purely the contract renewal for 2012, 2013 through 2015 for these categories of employees.
Okay.
Mr. President, move to approve.
Second. Motion by Lynn to approve, second by Dan.
I have a question.
Discussion.
As I read these, there seem to be, I just interested in, this is probably just some knowledge on my part, but it seemed like the insurance payment was consistent with how we pay teachers for the insurance portion.
Yes, yes.
But the retirement portion seemed different than how we deal with teachers. Is that by design or?
The retirement, the retirement portion mirrors the, for the most part, mirrors the handbook provision for those eligible to retire on or before the 2016.
Okay, and this is for, through what years? This is two years?
Yes, two years.
Okay. Does that answer your question?
Yeah.
Just to add on, there may be some small variations to that because I'm just looking like no later than January 15th, they have to give notice that they are going to retire if they're eligible.
Timeline's different.
Teachers have longer. So it isn't exactly the same.
Mm-hmm.
Glad you're reading it.
Mm-hmm.
Anybody else? Questions or comments? We have a motion and a second. Call for the question. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you. We're moving on then to long-term secondary space for learning, two new options for consideration. Mary?
I'm going to ask Tracy Havishaline to join me in sharing information with you. We also presented this to Facilities and Grounds Committee, and they felt that it was important that it came forward to the full board for consideration. So at this point, we talked about it a little while ago, that we have three options that the board has identified for further consideration, and they are all construction options. And what I want to emphasize is as we talk about some additional options for consideration, the administration has no preference on these options. You know, we're looking at identifying an option that our community supports as a long-term solution that certainly supports our program and the vision of the district and moving that forward and also provides adequate space for learning for our students. So as we offer additional options for considerations, they aren't the administration's options. They are just additional options that have not been considered up to this point, and we believe that they may have benefit, and that's for you to decide. So each of the options that we have, B, C, and F, that you currently have identified have pros and they have cons. There isn't a perfect solution for our issues. And so administratively, we started looking at one area as we looked at B and C because B and C both provide an additional transition for students. So we wanted to do some preliminary work on that transition. So we're going to share some information, and again, this may seem as it could be a con for these options, but there are also pros as well. And the reason it moved us to the next options that we're going to suggest you consider is because of what we found out. So Tracy's going to share the research that, the preliminary research that we've done and summarize that for us on transitions for students, an additional transition.
The discussion on grade configuration and transitions isn't new for the board or for the district. The task force looked at this as they were doing their deliberation on making their decisions. And the list of research notes that I'm going to share with you have been researched extensively. There's a long history, and I won't quote each of the research, academic research papers that I pulled from, but in addition to what I am sharing with you tonight, I reviewed five more just to make sure there was consistency in what I was seeing. First of all, research has shown a significant achievement loss with each transition year. And what I'm talking about with transitions and the research that I reviewed, it is all about school to school or within a school district. I'm not talking about students transitioning into a school district from another school district. This is all research based on students staying within the same district. So achievement loss with each transition year, students typically take at least two years to regain losses due to transition. Two, with an increase in school-to-school transitions, research shows a corresponding increase in student dropout rates. And you'll get some of the rationale why. Students do not appear to get used to transitioning over time. Previous experience with making transitions does not moderate the achievement loss of a new transition. Developmentally, between grades six and nine, this period is one of marked attitude, motivation, self-esteem, and judgment changes. A time where increased attention to student social and academic needs is critical. So much of what you heard tonight about some of our student supports fits with this. Students who transition frequently had increased feelings of anonymity. Schools with only a few grade spans may not be able to cultivate students' attachment or that understanding of the culture and feeling like they are involved in that school. Specifically, schools with a narrow grade span, two years, is typically the narrow span, or if you had one year.
Ninth-grade center, yes.
Right. Do not house students for a long enough period of time to enable teachers, students, and parents to form productive bonds. So it's not solely about students and their relationships, but also parents. And we know that parents are critical to supporting students in their learning. And with the more frequent transitions, parents had less connection with those schools as well because the investment that parents, when we look at the elementary K-5, they're there for a long time. They get to know parents or other parents and spend a lot more time in that building. Transition from one narrowly configured school to another seems to disrupt the social structure in which learning takes place. The disruption includes a decrease in time families have to contribute to the education of their children when their children attend multiple schools within a district. Not surprisingly, students spend more of their time and energy learning the culture of the building and less time focused on the academics piece. So, you know, how, just trying to figure out how, how do I navigate this school? And so they spend a lot of their time and energy focused on that versus the academics. So that's consistent with the loss that students experience with each transition. There's also some evidence to suggest that the larger grade spans, so this is in support of increasing those grade spans, and less transitions provides a higher probability for teachers to form communities of practice, meaning teachers have more time with students to share and problem solve with students because they have that time. And also continuity of learning from grade level to grade level. When there's a larger span, those teachers have a better understanding of where the students are coming from and where they're planning to go to.
So with that in mind, we started asking ourselves and the district leadership team, how might we modify an option to reduce the number of transitions and what would that look like? So as a result of that, you have taken action on options A through O, and so we named this next option P, and we have a version one and a version two. So I'll talk through this, and then I'll talk through the numbers, and Tracy can add in as well. So looking at option P1 for your consideration, it's construct a three-year high school for grades 10 through 12. So that's certainly already in one of the other options. But then it's convert the middle school and the high school to two schools, so splitting the population for six, seven, eight, and nine between those two schools. And so it's a four-year school now instead of two, two-year schools. We, again, thought about the UU challenge that we have, that we just talked about previously this evening, and said, okay, we know this school, the way UU is right at the present time, won't work on that site unless there are public utilities that are brought to the site. So is there something that we could do that might make the school on UU smaller? And maybe it would actually fit if we can't get public city utilities there. We don't know that yet because this is a larger school than the Rivercrest Elementary, but it's smaller than this three-year high school. So that is what option P2 is. And essentially, it's just flipping around which school you build. So instead of building the three-year high school, this is building one of the schools for grade six through nine. We also brought Principals Dan Koch from the middle school and Principal Laura Love into the conversation because it's not just about seats, it's not just about transitions, it's about our program as well. And certainly, we know the middle school program has high value for our students and their families, and it's well-supported by our community. So we wanted to make sure that this kind of structure could support that. Dan was very supportive of this structure and felt that we could deliver the same program that we do now and that it would work very well. So sixth grade and seventh grade would look very similar to what it looks like, eighth grade would be the same. And then it was about Laura and the ninth grade. And as you know, you have approved for next year, high school learning for the future and moving forward with freshman academies. So it's kind of the advanced version of our middle school houses. And both Laura and Dan felt that this would be very supportive of this new program. In some school districts, they have a ninth-grade center because that ninth grade is an important transition year where students, it's kind of a make and break year for students, as Tracy talked about, the transitions. And if you think of the ninth graders and then think about 10th, 11th, and 12th graders and how both similar and dissimilar they are and their needs during that time, that we all felt that the ninth grade in this kind of configuration would be a strong support for that transition to high school. And there is, you know, there's a big difference that happens for sophomores. And juniors and seniors already have it basically, and that's the driver's license. So if there is a three-year school and we keep our ninth graders in a school such as six, seventh, with sixth, seventh, and eighth graders, you know, we have schools where students are not driving. And again, that's another reason that may support or be an advantage to this model. Again, all models have pros and cons, and we're pointing out the pros right now just for your consideration. So let's look at the numbers.
Can I just add two other benefits to this configuration that was talked with both Dan and Laura? And that was the opportunities for eighth and ninth graders to participate in leadership opportunities and also build confidence and competence before making that transition to high school, that there would be greater opportunity to do that and be in that leadership role before moving into the high school. And also the opportunity for a larger number of students to participate in activities because you would have two separate schools providing the same kind of activities, but greater access for students to participate.
And certainly, we have and are, more access to student learning opportunities and development opportunities are important to us, and yet there are some other things that come along with it when you think of two, and I won't call them middle schools because they're not middle schools, and if they're intermediate schools or whatever they would be called, six-through-nine schools. Again, there's advantages and disadvantages. So if we look at the numbers, and this, Hazel Reinhardt's low-low numbers moved forward as you've seen before in the other options you considered. Certainly, the 10-through-12 school would move up to 1,548. So that could be a school that we would build, or it could be a school into a remodeled high school, certainly. And then we have to think about how many more students might be coming following that time, and will we have room for that? But again, it accommodates both of the options. If we look at the two six nines, and we have just equally divided the population, if one of those six nines happened to be in the high school, there are some additional advantages, and that would be to consider. Those populations could be different than just equal division. For example, when we look at the capacity of the middle school, that's really pushing on the capacity of the middle school at 1,125. So if it goes up to 1,000, you know, we're really back up there and then where it's going to go from there. So you might take the middle school and make it somewhat smaller, maybe it's 850 or whatever that is, into 2021. So we have the opportunity to be able to do that. Then looking at the six nine, and if we would build the three-year high school and look at the six nine on the high school site, again, going back to those no-student drivers, we don't need the parking lots that we have. We don't need all of them. So we actually can create more green space or more space on that site for student activities. We have the opportunity to do that without, because we don't need student parking. So again, there are some advantages to this. And Tracy, anything that we should also add?
The only piece would be in the notes section, and that's about the administrative offices. So if, and the administrative offices could move into a grade six-nine school if it was housed at the high school. But if the option was P2 where you're constructing a grade six-nine school, the administrative offices would stay where they're at because the high school, obviously, the 10, 12 would not allow that space.
So we'd be happy to take any questions that you might have about this.
And I'll just want to clarify that the recommendation here is to add these two as options, not to endorse them or bless them or say this is, these are the ones that we want to go with. We're just adding these as options based on some new information that we've discovered regarding kind of transitions particularly and some of the issues with that. I also will just say that the Facilities Committee did discuss this at length and had some favorable comments to it. I don't want to speak for you, but I would just indicate that that, it's coming, I think, as a recommendation from the Facilities Committee, so, to add these two options. Questions or comments?
Mr. President, just trying to get my arms around this a little bit. In terms- In terms of staffing in programs with some of these additional options, can you talk about that a little bit? In terms of, are we looking at increased number of staff, or are they just moving around? Or can you move program? Can you touch on that just a little?
Well, we haven't gone to that level yet, to get very far with that. I don't know, Nancy, if you have any additional comments on that. That will be the next level that we will go to. So for example, as the architects look at this and start to develop what the program would look like, the cost and so forth, we would also be looking at the staffing implications. But we just have not gone, great question, but haven't gone that far yet.
Yeah. And just to remember that the other three options that we voted on were to do more research on them, and so we're adding these two to that, to that research, so.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Have any citizens' information meetings been held since the January meeting where we disbanded the Citizens Advisory Committee?
I don't, I don't believe so.
No, at this point, we have no additional information to share. So we're waiting to get the architects for pre-referendum support on board, so that we can start moving forward, and then have more information.
We do always provide, for the community, the Connections email for any suggestions to come forward. So that's always been there, that's on the district homepage.
I believe when the Citizens Advisory Committee was disbanded, it was discussed that there would be additional World Cafe meetings in order to get citizen input into the process. That hasn't happened, right?
That's to come.
When?
Well, again, we have to dig into each one of these options with further study, and then when we have additional information, we'll be able to present them both to you and to the community, and then have questions that the community can respond to.
I believe, in doing what you're doing here, I believe it's ill-advised for this board to accept additional options and ideas that were created in the administration, when new ideas from the public have not been solicited, nor have they been added to the list of possibilities. The public's perception right now is that we have three options on the table, chosen by this board, and their understanding is that they don't have any input into this, because the three options have already been chosen. So by adding two more in that have been chosen by this administration, you're basically saying to the public, we can add more in, but you can't. I don't think that that's going to sit very well with the public, and I really object to this process. Also, I would submit that if you're going to add more options, put them back on the table, that you put back on the table the option of adding on to the middle school and high school. If the option table is open, then we should be putting other things back on there. I've actually had a lot of people ask me why that option was not left on, and I don't have a good answer for them, about why that wasn't left on. As to the two options that you're proposing, I believe that putting half of the students from the sixth or ninth grade in the high school building, which has a capacity of 1,680 people, you're basically going to put 878 students in there. You're using the building to half of its capacity. That doesn't seem like a very wise use of space that we already own. So those are my comments.
Just a comment regarding the public's ability to weigh in or to offer other options. I couldn't disagree more. We have given the community the options through the World Cafe exercises, and we've left it open after we looked at their options, and we voted on three. And then we made the open comment that we're leaving the door open for other ideas, of which they have opportunity to give at websites and other areas. So I really don't agree with that at all. And frankly, I think that the administration is one part of our community that can give options and can bring forward other ideas, and it's still going to be vetted by our community. We're not, as I've said before, not blessing this. This is something that the community will review and will decide on. So, and there'll be other opportunities, so.
Mr. Chairman?
Yep.
Have we received any other ideas from the community since January?
The fact that we haven't received any doesn't mean that there hasn't been the opportunity.
All right. I'm just making the point, we haven't received any. Thank you.
All right.
Comment?
Just a comment around Board Member McGurkey's point. So there was conversation around why we elected as a board to not add on to those schools. And we've said it many times, and I guess we'll say it again, is the fact that it's prohibitive, based on our core sizes of our cafeteria, our hallways. It just doesn't make sense to add more classrooms, it just becomes a non-workable school. There's no way to increase every hallway, increase the cafeteria, it just, it doesn't work to add on to that school, so.
And so you're indicating that option P1 or P2?
No, I'm, no, I'm just commenting on why the add-on to the current high school is not a feasible solution.
Okay.
My second comment is, if Board Member McGurkey is concerned around utilization of the high school, I think these two additional options better utilize the high school with having three grades in it versus two in the prior recommendation. So I'm not saying these are the right options for us, but I'm favorable considering both of these options.
Yeah. And again, you know, there's holes in all of them, so.
I like the three-year, the less than, the three-year transitions versus the two. I think there's some, I think you made some good points.
Mr. Chairman, isn't it four years, six, seven, eighth, and ninth? It's four years. Were you saying three?
No.
Oh, it's three for the high school. Okay, okay, yeah. I agree, I think that's a, I really like this whole plan. I'm glad that they have come up with it to find out about the problems that kids have in transitioning, and that I think these are very good. The P1 and P2 are very good for the community, for the kids.
I think there are going to be benefits to all the options, and there are going to be issues with all the options, and we're going to go through the process and engage the community.
Mark?
Just a real brief comment, Tom, thank you. Just, I, for one, I guess applaud the administration for, you know, taking a little wider view and looking at some of these things in light of the transition information that Tracy presented us with. And, you know, our goal here is to construct the best educational model we can, so I think that has to be really a prime consideration, what's best for our students. So once again, I do support these new options.
Mr. President? Tracy, when you were talking about the sale of ASC, both of these options include the sale of the ASC or not? I got confused there.
They do not. So the sale of the administrative offices could occur if you constructed a 10, 12, and one of the six-nine options, building schools moved into the high school, because as Board Member McGurkey had stated, that that space would be underutilized when you look at it. But if you're moving the administrative offices into that space, then that does change what your capacity of that space is.
Okay.
So it would better utilize that high school space with the six-nine and the administrative offices in there. However, if you built a six-nine and you look at the 10, 12 staying at the high school, and you look out, that doesn't really allow you the space for the administrative offices.
Thank you.
Other comments?
I just want to go back to, again, we've put these numbers for the six-nine, and we've made them equal, so we split them. So if we would put a six-nine into the high school, and we chose to put, have the capacity for 1,200 students, or 1,300 students, or whatever, we would take more space in the high school. So it's really a decision, if we went this way, it's a decision that you have to make.
1,300 students and the administration office.
Other comments, or a motion? Move to approve? Motion by Brian to approve this recommendation of adding two options, the two options, or second?
He's taken it.
Second by Pat. Any other discussion?
Real call vote, please.
Real call vote is requested by Sandy. Pat?
Chairman, yes.
Kaiser shot, aye.
Robson, aye.
Holland, aye.
McGurkey, no.
Bell, aye.
Motion passes, so. Moving on to consent items.
Uh, no, long-term.
Whoops, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. It's getting late. Long-term secondary space for learning, pre-referendum architect service contract with Hoffman. And we're having Jim join us.
Yep, Jim Staskel is going to join into this conversation. And so, as you know, we've moved through a process, starting with the Facilities and Grounds Committee, who developed criteria to support the selection of an architect engineering firm for pre-referendum support services. The district issued a request for qualifications for those services, and seven firms responded. The responses were based on the criteria, and the field was narrowed, were reviewed, I'm sorry, based on the criteria, and the field was then narrowed to four firms who were interviewed, and those firms were ATSNR, Bray, DLR, and Hoffman. The district interview team consisted of Board Member Tom Holland, Board Member Lynn Robson, myself, Jim Staskel, and Tim Erickson. We narrowed the field to two firms, as it was unanimous, and the first choice was Hoffman, and the second choice was DLR. So Tim moved forward with talking to each of those firms about the scope, related fees, and then checking references for both firms. Their proposals came back. Hoffman's scope of services was for $70,000 plus reimbursable expenses of $7,000, with no guarantee that the district provide final design services. This was just, again, for pre-referendum support. DLR proposed to perform the same services for $188,000 plus reimbursable expenses of $10,000, again, with no guarantee for the design services later. And certainly, I'm going to have Jim first talk about his impressions of Hoffman, he's worked directly with them on both Rivercrest and at the middle school for the middle school addition, and then I'll go through some additional comments.
Clearly, I'm not the IT guy. Since I started with the district in December of 1998, I've been involved in quite a few construction projects here, the pool addition at the middle school.
Jim, sorry, can you just pull that a little closer to you, so we can?
Okay.
Perfect.
My experience with construction in the district includes the pool addition at the middle school, the tech ed addition at the high school, the kitchen remodel at the high school, the high school pool renovation and classroom addition, the renovation and remodeling of Willow River Elementary, the purchase and the build-out of the Administrative Service Center building, the construction of Rivercrest, and the middle school space addition. The last two of those, as Mary mentioned, we worked with Hoffman. It's been my experience, they've just been a great working partner. They have a very successful process of preparation and planning. Some of the components included in that process are an elevated ability to listen to program and district needs, the ability to design to those needs and adapt those designs as needs become more defined. They demonstrate successful delivery of those designs within a defined budget. They use constant communication and clarification of any changing expectations that arise during planning, the planning stage that may impact the design budget. And the results have been projects that are well-defined at the start. They have heightened communication during the process, which allows for efficient collaborative approach to problem resolution. And the projects have been on time and on budget. I think as evidence is the building we're sitting in, and the addition out at the middle school, if anybody, have you all been there or not?
Mm-hmm.
The addition at the middle school? Okay. And I've got some other bullets down here about sustainability and harmonious job site and things like that. But they've just been a real good partner for the district in the jobs that they've worked on with us. I'm not saying that they've been, that the jobs have run perfectly, as any major construction project, you're going to have hurdles, there's going to be things in the designs that maybe clash with each other. But it's how they get through that process of resolution that I think separates them from some of the other firms that I've worked with, both in the district and outside of the district, my prior job to coming here. And that really speaks to that harmonious job site, and that collaborative process of resolution. They really kind of get buy-in from all the vested parties and all the contractors working on the site into that resolution process. And I think that's really through communication and planning. And they also, you know, we've worked with some, many contractors and architects who claim they're going to be your partner through that process, but when that process gets a little messy, they might not want to be your partner quite as much. And Hoffman has really stepped up to the plate, because a lot of times, sometimes, you know, the process of resolution costs money. And they've been willing to bear some of that burden of extra cost.
Thanks, Jim. So we would recommend a contract for pre-construction, pre-referendum architect services with Hoffman LLC. The primary reasons are certainly our track record of success with this firm, award-winning Rivercrest, lead gold designed and completed ahead of schedule and under budget. The cost by an independent firm, the square footage was 29% less than that of conventional elementary schools built in three states, Wisconsin, Minnesota, and Illinois. The middle school addition was also completed on time and under budget. They have high quality, and they're thoroughness. They have, their experience is extensive in sustainable construction, and Rivercrest is an example of that. We looked at the operational costs from the modeling to the reality, the actual, and it actually was better. And so they have reduced certainly our operational costs. Their strength follow-through, extensive experience in school design, and the recommendations from other school districts, even though we have a track record with them, we also checked other references, and they were all very strong.
I'd just like to make a comment, that I was part of the interview team, and we went into this process fully intending to discount Hoffman. We were, there's been some comment in the community about Hoffman for whatever variety of things, and we thought, well, let's, we want to really look at these other providers, and really seriously look at them. And the bottom line is, is that why would you do, go anywhere else when they have the highest quality that you can imagine? We've got a track record of them that brings in projects on time, under budget, has been recognized in the work that they've done, as some of the most outstanding work from groups and districts and outside of our area. And they're going to cost us about half of what the next best bid is. So I, I'm sorry, this is a no-brainer for me, and whatever the comments are in the community, I'll accept. Mark?
Thank you, Mr. President. Well said. I think the results really speak for themselves, and I'm prepared to move that the board approved the pre-referendum architect service contract with Hoffman.
Second.
Is there a motion and a second to approve Hoffman as the pre-referendum architect service contractor? Any other discussion?
Mr. President, I just want to draw your attention to the contract that you have a copy of. It says draft across that, and it was because we were having it reviewed by Attorney Jay Squires, who has reviewed it at this time, and we can remove the draft.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman?
Yep.
Does... Does, this contract only involves pre-referendum services? This has nothing to do with actually designing and building any kind of building, correct? When will his work start? What, what is he going to do for the $70,000 and when does that start?
Mary?
Well, essentially, it starts as soon as we get the contract signed and we start, have our first meeting. So, very soon.
Okay, so what meetings will there be this early in the process before we even have any idea what we're doing?
Well, you have now identified five options for further consideration. And part of that research on those options, it's very important for us to start developing a skeletal program so that these architects can provide information to the board about the cost for each of these and to articulate tho, those details to the board and to our community. And then they will also help us with the potential of looking at locations for these schools based on board decisions.
Okay, so they help us come up with trying to decide which of these options is the best?
What they do is they provide information for you to make those decisions.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Any other comments or questions? We have a motion and a second. All those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed, same sign. Motion carries, thank you. Now we'll get to the consent items and take a motion to approve the consent items, including the language around the expenditures.
Mr. President, I move for approval of the consent items, including expenditures in the amount of $2,557,534.70.
Okay, is there a motion? Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Lynn. There was a motion by Dan. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed, same sign.
Mr. President, could I comment on the retirements?
Sure.
Yours?
Not mine, no. We've already taken care of that.
Sure.
No, you've, you've just approved seven additional certified staff retirements last month. You approved two. In fact, there are 25 eligible, so that's a total of nine out of 25 who have requested and you have approved their retirement. So let me comment on the people that you've just approved. Sharon Kaltenberg, our district school nurse, has served the district for 18 years. She says she will truly miss the students and staff that she has worked with for the past 18 years in the Hudson School District. You also approved kindergarten teacher Judy Meinke, who has taught in the district for 23 years. And Judy says, "I began my teaching career in Hudson in 1976, resigned in 1987 to be home with my children and was rehired in 2003. I was fortunate to have worked under every superintendent with the exception of E.P. Rock. I also feel very fortunate to have been part of the exceptional educational system here in Hudson. The Hudson School District will always have a special place in my heart, as it was here that my four boys received their entire K-12 education in a place where my husband and I were fortunate to teach and touch the lives of children. The Hudson School District is a wonderful place to work and a very special place for children to learn and grow. Thank you for the opportunity." You also approved kindergarten teacher Patty Johnson's request for retirement. Patty has taught in the school district for 15 years. She says, "I am glad I had the opportunity to teach in the Hudson School District and be part of the Willow River School family for the past 15 years. Thank you for all the professional support and care that you have given me throughout my career." Lois Kahoy, kindergarten teacher for 16 years, requested retirement. "My heart is filled with gratitude for the opportunity to teach kindergarten in the Hudson School District where I was blessed with years of working with our children. Each and every one of their smiling faces has touched my life forever. I will miss the staff and everyone involved with making our schools run smoothly, but do hope that our paths will continue to cross. I wish everyone continued success in your mission to educate our youth." Claudia Kell, fifth grade teacher, Hudson Prairie, 17 years. And Claudia says, "I greatly appreciate the support and encouragement that colleagues, family, students, and the community have given me over the past years of service in the Hudson Schools. It is with fond memories and sadness that I leave the classroom with anticipation of continuing to work with children of all ages in different settings. I've chosen to retire from my full-time teaching position. Thank you for the opportunity to serve." David Ferenger, math teacher at the middle school, 29 years of teaching in Hudson. "Thank you for the opportunity to be a Hudson teacher for 29 years. The years went fast with many memories." And finally, Teresa Cameron, language arts teacher, middle school, 36 years in the school district. "I am most grateful for the past 36 years I spent as a teacher at the Hudson Middle School. I am especially thankful for the support of administration and colleagues. Most sincerely, Teresa."
Nancy, thank you for sharing that.
Yeah.
I, I, there was no intention to overlook those names.
Oh, I know that.
In that hastily, hasty vote at all. So thank you for sharing that. We do appreciate their service and the service of all of our teachers, so. Okay. Please, where am I? Thank you. Committee reports, starting with learning and program development. Brian?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We met on Monday, January 28th. Three agenda items. One was Jim Delune gave us a RTI implementation update. There'll be more coming on that. The second was student wellness plan update. We heard part of that today with the fuel, fuel to play for 16. There's a lot of actually great things going on in our district on student wellness. It's good to see. And the third was Sandy, Cory, and David, the dream team, talking about the reorganization.
The three amigos.
Tracy.
Sorry.
Musketeers.
It's getting a little late, buddy.
Late. Questions? Any questions? It's going to get out of hand here. Okay, moving on to Finance Committee, Dan Ternoy.
Thank you, Mr. President. The items on our agenda were, we went into closed session to discuss promotion compensation of public employees, proposed employee handbook revisions, which we approved under the consent items today, the audit report, which we heard from our auditors early. Tim provided a quarterly financial update and pretty much on track with our finances for the current fiscal year. We did have a discussion about the JV hockey program, and this proposal is, basically, the intent is to try to strengthen our current hockey program by offering a JV addition to the program. Stephanie Boss gave a, a report to us, and that proposal appears to have a lot of support from the community and the Hudson hockey clubs. And I think even the, if I recall, the hockey groups were willing to provide some financial support for that as well. I think at this point in time, help me out here, it was, Stephanie was going to do a little more research and get back to us. Is that correct?
I believe Tim asked.
Okay, Tim, Tim was going to get back to us at a future meeting. Other than that, I think that was it.
Any questions of Dan in the Finance Committee? Okay, moving on then to the Facilities and Grounds Committee, which met and had, thank you, February 5th. And all three of the items that we had have been discussed and covered tonight in our agenda. That being the long-term secondary space for learning, the two new options that you've approved tonight for consideration. Secondly, the county UU property with or without city utilities as a secondary school site, of which we had discussion tonight, and you gave us your feedback on that and will be coming back with action. And the, the third one was a closed-session item regarding negotiating a contract for architect services, so, which we've also handled and done tonight as well. So, any questions of, of me or the Facilities Committee? Okay, moving then on to the Personnel Committee. Mark?
Thank you, Tom. Personnel Committee met last Tuesday. All items on our agenda were also covered earlier this evening, the principal and associate contract renewals, coordinator-supervisor contract renewals, the employee handbook revisions, and then lastly, we had a closed session for the purpose of considering promotion, performance evaluation data, and compensation of specific employees.
Questions of Mark, the Personnel Committee? Okay, then we, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn to closed session with the language as it's written, if you would, please.
Mr. President, I move to adjourn to closed session pursuant to Wisconsin statutes 19.85, parent one, parent C, for the purpose of considering performance evaluation data and compensation of the superintendent.
Motion by Lynn, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Dan?
Discussion.
Any discussion?
Well, before I vote, I want to make sure of one thing. What, I want to identify what the session is for. As stated in the agenda, it's for the purpose of considering a performance evaluation and compensation of the superintendent. So my understanding is that her contract will not be discussed, correct? Because I had asked her about that. She sent me an email saying that it was going to be to discuss compensation and her contract. But the contract is not noticed on the agenda, so I'm, I just want to make sure that we're not going to be discussing extension of contract or anything like that. This is strictly what it says on the agenda.
We will have Mick speak to this specifically.
Good evening. The compensation element in the agenda certainly does cover any kind of contract. When you talk about the compensation of your, your superintendent, you are referring specifically to items in the contract, what benefits, what salary, the length of time you intend to employ her. So that certainly will be covered under this item.
There's a motion and a, is there a second? Second. Is there a second? Second. Dan was the second, okay. Any other discussion?
Roll call vote.
And just common procedure for a roll call vote. Pat?
Chairman, aye.
Kaiser shot, aye.
Chairman, aye.
Robson, aye.
Holland, aye.
McGurkey, no.
Bell, aye.
Motion passes. We'll adjourn to closed session. I'll just note that we'll be back and, and we'll reconvene to open session after this closed session as well, which is a little different than in the past. Thank you. Okay, we're going to reconvene into open session, and I'll entertain a motion to consider performance evaluation data and compensation of the superintendent.
Mr. President, I would like the motion that the board will set the superintendent's salary, the 2012, 2013 year, at $159,480, and that our council will be directed to draft language to reflect that amount.
Okay, so, motion by Mark, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Lynn, any discussion?
Roll call vote, please.
Okay, any discussion? Any request for a vote, roll call vote? I'll start with Pat.
Chairman, aye.
Kaiser shot, aye.
Chairman, aye.
Robson, aye.
Holland, aye.
McGurkey, no.
Bell, aye.
Motion passes. Move to adjourn?
Second.
Motion by Brian, second by Lynn. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed, same sign. Good night.